Workshop at the Marietta City Council. I now call to order. Madam City Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Potemle Bell.
Here.
Here. Thank you very much. Today, we're going to be -- this will be workshop number five for the hillside updates. Before we get presents, I want to clarify how we're going to run the meeting like we've been doing all year long. The workshop is -- there's two items that's going to be presented today. After staff presents item number one, we will have questions first from the council, then we will open it up to public comments, and those questions that they might have, you can answer those as we go. After they sit down and we finish with that, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and direction. Does that agree with everybody up here? Perfect. I'm now going to turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a couple of things to set this up before kicking it over to the rest of the staff team, and consistent with what you're describing as kind of the approach, just wanted to remind council that it's been really a long time since we started this conversation, but our first handful of meetings, we were really looking at the totality of everything we needed to consider with a potential hillside ordinance, and I think that made it especially difficult. Sometimes the conversation was very meandering from one topic to the next, kind of hard to wrap our arms around the whole thing, and weren't making a lot of progress. So, starting last meeting, we shifted our approach to really start to take a little more of a bite-sized approach, to have basically a series of workshops that look at component pieces of the ordinance. We've tried to organize that in a smart way, so that our first of those conversations, for instance, was really about where should this apply? And had the answer been nowhere, we would have been done. We would have wrapped up and went home. So, we've tried to kind of organize it in such a way that we have off-ramps where we need to. So, we've already covered some good ground, and I think made more progress than we did the first handful of meetings, which was to decide that this does apply in a very specific area, assisted by a map, clarified the slope percentage and some other details. Now, we start to move into the design standard piece, specifically with walls and landscaping and others, knowing that we still have yet to introduce things that were brought up even at the last meeting, like where would this apply in terms of already developed or disturbed properties, or properties that are not yet developed? It's intentional we do that because we think it will be pretty meaningful to first decide, are the standards really similar and consistent with those that exist elsewhere in the city? If so, it might be easier to have everybody adhere to those same standards. If they're a little more aggressive, alternatively, you might decide it's worth it to be more generous with the exemptions from those standards, like properties that already have significant development. So, we have thought about kind of the general approach. That said, as we get answers to these specific questions, we will revisit the thing in total, so that if something we do along the way causes us to want to revisit a decision that's already made, we can do that. So, while we're looking at bite-sized pieces, that doesn't mean we will lose the perspective of the hillside ordinance in total once we kind of get through to the end and can pan out and look at the whole thing and still make sure that it meets the policy goals of this council. So, with that, I turn it over to staff to take you through this kind of second meeting and this revised approach.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Just to kind of tee off of what City Manager Clifton had stated, so we're covering two specific topics, but there's really three kind of categories. So, we've got resident -- sorry, hillside retaining walls, non-hillside retaining walls, which apply to the entire city, and then we've also got landscape standards for hillside areas. So, you'll get a presentation from Chris Tracy, Senior Planner. He's going to go through the standards. We have what we're calling focus topics that we're asking for clarification from the city council, and as you help us identify your preferences, we'll make note of those, and as City Manager Clifton stated, we'll at some point come back, wrap those up, you know, for you, and revisit those and make sure whatever you decide tonight, the direction you give to staff to identify your preference, that those will show up in a, you know, a final ordinance, but you'll get another bite at the apple, so to speak. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Tracy for his presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Chris Tracy. As the introduction came through, for those folks out there, I'm a senior planner here with our Advanced Plan Division. Today, we'll be covering the topics over on retaining walls and also landscaping in hillside and non-hillside areas, and our last workshop was back on October 21st. So, just to focus back on what we talked about last time and where there was consensus. So, the first thing was hillside areas shall be limited to those areas shown on the proposed hillside area overlay map that are 25% or greater. The second item was it would apply to residential and open space areas. 25% slope was confirmed as the correct hillside percentage threshold versus 20%. Continuing this, specific plan areas won't be subject to the updated ordinance. However, they will be shown on the overlay map with reference footnotes, so there's that cross-referencing connection. Developed and undeveloped parcels will be a layer within the city's GIS system, and we're going to have another workshop on that item specifically. And then applicants may use either the hillside overlay map or an average slope formula with a CAD-based solution if there's a difference in opinion about what the slope is. So, our first main topic area is retaining walls, and more specifically, the desired retaining wall forms in both hillside and non-hillside areas of the city. The first type of retaining walls, everyone should be pretty familiar with this. They're your CMU type of wall. They're very common. They are built in layers with concrete hollow cores reinforced with steel bars. They're filled with concrete for strength and stability. In general, they're very durable, fire resistant, and last a long time. They can be textured with stucco, colored, or veneer to blend in with the surrounding environment. This is an example of a concrete masonry wall. This is in Laguna Niguel, California. They used a stone veneer finish and did a nice tiering approach with landscaping. This is another example. This is a split-face CMU wall, and they did multiple tiering with landscaping as well. And this is your type of geo -- well, it's a crib wall, a keystone wall, with landscaping as part of that wall design. On your screen here, these are some of the pros and cons. I won't go through everything, but just to highlight some of the main ones. Some pros, as they provide a lot of aesthetic versatility and they're quick to install. Some cons include limited height capacity without large footings and may require extensive trenching for larger walls. Pivoting here, I'll be covering the GeoGrid form. They're stabilized by soil, and they're backfilled with a -- over a GeoGrid mesh typically goes back about 10 feet, and the strength comes from the GeoGrid mesh itself. The face can be constructed from concrete panels, masonry blocks, or other materials, but the structural stability comes from that reinforced mesh material. This is an example in Vista, California. They use a GeoGrid wall with landscaping. It's a double tier, and I will have Google Street View. We can visit any of these locations if you want to look at anything further as well. This is an example from Lake Forest, California. This is a newer development. They used this type of wall as a solution as well there. And finally, in San Marcos, California, this is just another one. Closer to home, down the road, this is in Temecula, California. This is a larger GeoGrid wall on the west side of the city, and, you know, they'll have to incorporate some landscaping elements, but there's quite a height situation going on there. And close to home here, this is at Santa Rosa Highlands. This is a couple of years after development has concluded, and landscaping was installed with that GeoGrid wall there. These are some of the pros and cons with this type of installation. Some pros with it is they're suitable for larger walls with a reduced footprint. They can be cost-effective for larger projects. Some cons is they require significant excavation to install sometimes, and asset options may be more limited. And then next here, I'm going to go through four key policy questions, and I can stop at any of these if you like, as there's a lot to kind of cover here. The first one being, should the city establish a preference between GeoGrid and standard CMU retaining walls, or permit both options based on site-specific conditions? The second question, should specific finished materials such as stucco, split-face, stone veneer, as in that example from Laguna Niguel, be identified as a preferred treatment? The third option, or third question, I'm sorry. Should the GeoGrid wall systems incorporate decorative color combinations, muted tones, or provide some flexibility for either approach? And the fourth question here, should these retaining wall design standards be implemented citywide or limited to designated hillside areas? And Mayor, I could stop here if you -- if we want to walk through these things, and then I can continue on the PowerPoint.
Okay. I think that's a -- this is a good stopping point. Why don't we start here? We have in the queue questions for Mayor Potemle Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess if you want to get feedback for each of these four questions, Mayor, that might be a good starting point if we have any comments, but I'll just go through these. Number one.
Okay.
Should the city establish preference? I don't think we should have a preference. I think the preference should be given to the developer or the homeowner. Number two, the specific finished materials, stucco, split-face blocks, stone veneer. Again, I think if we have a minimum, we don't want cinder blocks exposed, but then the rest of it, I really, I don't think I would want to get that granular in insisting a homeowner or developer make them use something. Can you go to the third one?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
GeoGrid walls incorporated decorative color combinations?
Like in that example from -- I'll go back to some of the pictures, maybe. So, you could kind of see it here. This is in Lake Forest. They used like a color combination for the wall, the wall face itself.
So, you're just saying have essentially like
Yeah.
-- matching tones around landscaping, the housing.
Like earth tones.
Yeah.
Versus just a mono, like just a flat color, like say it's just tan only, or gray.
Like hot springs.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That's the single color.
Correct.
Can I think it is? Okay, and then the fourth one?
Oh, go back to this. Sorry.
Should these generally -- yeah, citywide is my opinion, so that's me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potemle. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You want to go through them one, two, three, and four as well?
No.
Okay. That was a no.
I have a question, actually.
Oh, okay.
On page five, number -- slide number 10. So, this keystone wall, is that -- that's not a GeoGrid wall?
I think they're stacked using interlocking connection points. They're a little different.
So, there's no GeoGrid stabilizing that?
I don't believe so. I think -- saw Jeff Hitcher earlier, but.
There he is, right there.
Yeah. Do you -- are you familiar with the keystone walls?
Well, why don't you join us? We have some information.
I just, I always thought that these had some sort of structure behind them versus just being stacked on a tier. It will be.
It is now.
Thank you. Yeah, so keystone walls are typically done -- sometimes they're done in a GeoGrid fashion, so you'll have a GeoGrid that'll actually extend beyond the wall that will act as the support for the wall. Smaller walls that are GeoGrid, or that are keystone block walls, can be gravity standing, just free-standing walls that stack upon each other with rods.
So, like three or four feet or something like that?
That kind of interlock the blocks together. Those don't usually get very tall. They're usually used predominantly in residential, small residential applications. You get on larger projects, you'll end up with some form of tieback, whether that be GeoGrid fashion, or soil nails, or something of that nature.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And before he leaves, can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Piggyback on that really quick.
Sure, absolutely.
These look like real plants, not weeds, which is quite nice. Is a wall like this have a drip system or some type of a watering system within, built within the wall to keep the plants growing and not dying?
Yeah, generally speaking, Southern California, these would need some form of irrigation unless you could have a non-irrigated, something non-irrigated.
Okay.
Normally, this would be something like that, would have to have some form of an irrigation system to survive.
Thank you.
But it's not, but it's not built in the wall?
No, it's, it's, but it's within the structure somewhere. There is some type of drip system or something to keep it in.
So, the irrigation could be coming from the top of the wall.
Oh, and coming down, okay.
And then dripping down. It could be in the bottom of the wall. In the case of Merida Hot Springs, we're putting in large walls there. Those are intended to be climbing vines is what's supposed to be done there.
Okay.
Those are pockets in the bottom, in the ground.
Okay.
That's where the irrigation would be. So, it wouldn't necessarily be built into the wall. I don't know that I would see any reason why they couldn't do that. I don't know that that's normal.
But my concern was there would be irrigation in something like this with a living type of wall, type of situation?
Yes, that would be normal.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, Ron.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Hitch. And then with the policy questions, I agree with Councilmember Lavelle on the first one, that we don't want to get so tight on our, our design standards that everyone has to do the exact same thing.
Sure.
So, we certainly want more options and not. And as far as finished materials go, I have no preference between, you know, if somebody wants to do stucco or a split-face or, or stone veneer, any of those look nice. I think that the focus needs to be on the colors.
Okay.
Obviously, if somebody says, "I want to do a stucco, and I'm going to make it neon blue," that might be an issue. So, I think the focus has got to be the color of the materials and the variation, which I think is number three as well.
Three, yeah.
The variation versus if you've got a 10-foot stucco wall that spans 100 feet, do you want that all tan? I think obviously the variation matches in, whether it's on a hillside or not, matches in much better, which then answers question number four. It really needs to apply everywhere.
Citywide.
And I think the other piece is, should we landscape some walls or not? So, I know that the keystone we just talked about can have the climbing vines.
Yeah.
If they terraced it, like some of the pictures you showed, to where they did, you know, a wall and then a four or five-foot section, and then a wall and a four or five, five-foot section, landscaping can be integral part, that may or may not make more sense on a hillside than just where there's not a large wall on, in the rest of the city.
Yeah, and that's our next focus topic, so we can, we can definitely dive into more specifics.
Thank you.
But no, thank you for the feedback.
Perfect. Dr. DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation so far. I have a couple of questions. The keystone, is the keystone have to have plants, or can it be without plants? And is the keystone, we've already determined that the keystone and the GeoGrid wall can be one and the same, although they don't have to be one and the same.
Right. It sounded like with a keystone can be applied with a, similar to a CMU wall at smaller heights.
Okay.
But at larger heights, you have to do some sort of reinforcement based on what the city engineer was indicating there.
Right, because the force coming from the dirt behind it, right?
Because of the lateral force, yeah.
Right. So, when we talk about a keystone, we talk about choosing something, would we assume that that keystone would be planted, no matter what? Or do we need to now put a determination on height with whether it should be planted or not? Is, are we going into that next?
Yeah, that's going to be kind of our next questions with landscaping. We can, we can definitely go into that a little bit more.
Okay, because I really think that that's vitally important when we're talking about looking at a large structure or a small structure, right?
Absolutely.
Six-foot fence versus. The other thing is, I know that maybe this is further on in our discussion as well, but the timeframe in order for this to be finished. So, we have a lot of projects going on in our city, and it doesn't seem to be a priority. They build the wall, whatever type of wall they want to build, and then we grow beautiful mustard seed for a year or two while the project's being done. Can we also put a timeframe on that developer to make sure that that wall is growing immediately and not waiting until their project is done, and that the community gets to look at an ugly structure while we're waiting for the wall to be completed?
Yeah, council, we typically have a three-to-five-year monitoring program for landscaping, meaning that over that period, while we have their bond, if anything becomes dead or dying, it has to be replaced. Usually with the arid climate that we have in this part of the state, it does take a little bit longer for landscaping to grow and implement. We can look into alternatives such as starting with a larger planting size. Usually, they start with one gallon. It takes much longer for one gallon to procure. We can look into starting at three to five gallon and things like that. Have a more advanced plant or shrub.
What about if the wall is so large, we're starting at a 15-gallon instead of starting at a three-gallon, because, you know, that plant is in its infancy, you know? And that's going to take years. We know how long it takes for landscaping to grow in our yard, so.
I think if I'm hearing council correctly, is that based upon the size or impact of a wall, the landscaping should be appropriate, meaning how early in advance should we screen that? I think we have some options that we can delve for council.
I also think that, like, given the wall, let's just pick apart Hot Springs since we can, that wall, you know, being that monstrosity and not having any planting at the bottom for what I can see driving by, or maybe it's a one gallon, and the weed there is bigger than the plant that they planted, but I do believe that, you know, we need some strong design standards, because we're going to get, you know, a community that's not beautiful. And, and that's our job as councils, to make sure that our design standards are strong, and that when a development comes in, they're, they know what they have to do in our city, right? You showed all these nice, beautiful pictures from other cities, not from us, right? Except for the big wall that Temecula is experiencing, probably because they don't have a tough design standard. So, I'm, I'm ready to answer to these questions as well, and we can get into some of that as well. But I do believe that from my experience in the past with development, I think that the more information we can put down, the better, and the smaller niche that we can make developers fit into, even better. So, so I think that the question to number one, I think, yes, we need to have a preference. I think a split-face rock keystone planted, I think we need to be strong on what we want, or we're going to get, you know, the bare necessity of what they, you know, oh, well, they'll let us build a, you know, cinder block with, you know, half an inch of stucco, which will fall off in two years, right? We don't want that. So, I think that we need to be pretty specific with that. And I also believe that, you know, I don't have a problem with stucco. I think it's beautiful. It's Spanish architecture, which, which I happen to love, but it is our community, and it's our, you know, history. So, split-face rock, stone veneer, all of those, I do think that we should have specifics.
Sure.
I don't necessarily need to tell them exactly what type of rock to use, but rock is nice. And your question number three is, yes, I think it should be muted in color tones, and I think we should have also control of that. And then I think that, yes, I agree with Councilmember Holliday and Lavelle, that all areas of the city should be impacted with this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I had a lot to say, but, you know, this is kind of a hot topic right now.
Can I piggyback off?
Absolutely, go ahead. And then Lori, I'll call you just then.
No piggybacking. We're not in grade school anymore. Her comment about when the planning's required, I know right now we have off-site improvements required before they start building, correct?
Correct.
But landscaping can go in after the buildings are built?
Usually, it's prior to issuance of building permit that we start the inspection process, and we require them to start planting right then and there. We want the initial plantings done prior to occupancy.
Prior to occupancy, but not prior to building?
No, the construction can occur as we're allowing the landscaping to be built. Sometimes they're having issues with the water connection, so we want to make sure that they can be adequately watered, and so the timing is right around the time that they're getting occupancy. But we're usually having the plantings done just right before that occurs.
So, I think what Councilmember DeForest's comment was geared towards, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misreading it, was, is there a way to have those landscaping done earlier in the process? Because if you look at Hot Springs, their grading's done, construction's underway, and there's no, besides wild weeds, there's no landscaping on that monstrosity of a wall at all.
At a minimum, a lot of the projects, or multifamily projects that we work on are phased, so each building comes in and we sign off each building. At a minimum, we require that the perimeter of the property be landscaped. We can look into see if there's an earlier timeframe, but construction is dynamic. A lot of times when you're constructing things, you, you could use that area to put equipment or personnel, or do the construction for trenching, for other matters, but we'll take that away today and see how early in the process can we have the landscaping started.
Specifically for walls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and what type of starter-sized plans can we go with so that the maturity rate is earlier than later?
Thank you.
Yeah, those are very clear to us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Piggyback, well.
All right, we're going to move on to Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, with regards to downtown specific plan, if I remember correctly, I think that there is four different types of elevation. Is that correct, that they, that development can choose from?
Yeah, there's, what's it called? American mercantile, farmhouse, I think Spanish, craftsmen.
Right. So, in my opinion, I believe that we should have the same criteria, is that we offer four different, or five, depending on all that you have mentioned here. And with regards to the stucco, split-face blocks, stone veneer, again, giving them four to five different options that are within the ordinance, can you go to number three, please? With regards to the muted stones, the color combination, I think that we also have that in a specific plan as well in downtown, correct? And so, if we can identify those particular colors, especially if we're building, if we're building on a rural piece of property, we'll want to make sure that it does blend in.
With our tones, yeah.
With regards to the retaining walls, citywide, I agree with my colleagues. I'd like to implement that citywide. In addition, there was a study done with regards to the devastation of Maui when that community was burned down. And believe it or not, there were fire-resistant plants that sustained those fires. And I think that also with regards to our state and our fire codes and the insurances, the insurance companies right now, I think that we should be very specific of what type of plants cannot be planted and what is acceptable as well. You already got that?
There is some, it does speak to natural vegetation in our code currently, but we could be more specific. We have our landscape architect that's a consultant with the city we can work with.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you. That concludes my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll bring in, I agree with, with, my counsel has already suggested including citywide. I think that's very important. And I, I do agree that we have to find a way to plant if there, these walls are going to have plants. We need to do this sooner rather than later to give them a chance to mature a little bit sooner than just the weeds growing, because now it's on, Hot Springs, if we're going to tear that apart, they may have to go through Hot Springs, clean all that out again, and start all over. So, I believe that that is, for the walls, the way the walls look, that's the biggest complaint right now, besides the big building, that we are getting, is that this is a monstrosity wall that is a sore, eyesore to everybody coming and going. And, you know, if we had some type of specific planting that they could do sooner, that that would be, alleviate some of these concerns. So, I do agree with that. In citywide, absolutely. And we need to stick to our guns when it comes to colors and stucco, split-face. I mean, I don't want to overreach and say, "You can only do this," but give them four options and that's it. If you do this one, you can do this. If you do this one, you can do that. Give them options, let them choose, and then hold them to it. That's what I would like to see happen.
Okay.
We're done with that one? Madam Mayor, we're going to bring up, can I just make one other comment? Sure, go ahead. We are all pretty much in agreement with, with one, two, three, and four.
Yeah.
I think that you heard us here today. The one thing that we would like to give direction to staff is, we want to make sure that if we can make the developer plant, and again, whether, whether it's five gallon or 15 or 25, I think you receive consensus that that is a high, high priority for us. So, I just want to make sure that you, you heard us. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and bring up public comment for these four items only. Do I have any comments? Mr. Alan Long?
Mr. Allen Long?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Before I address council, I do have one procedural question for the city attorney, if I may.
Okay.
Tiffany, my question is, does council have the authority to come up with findings to determine if a land use goal has been met or not?
For what purpose?
A land use goal, if there's a goal, can they have, can they create findings to determine if the goal has been met?
I mean, in their opinion, but I don't know, why would they be doing that?
Do they have the authority to do it? And I'll answer that in just a minute. Do they have the authority to determine that? Is that within their purview?
I mean, they could make findings on something if they elect to.
Okay. So that brings me to the land use goal 15-1.1. It's in your staff report. Because I still want to start off by saying, I think you're putting a Band-Aid on a broken arm here. The issue with this, and why it's convoluted and confusing, is you have a general plan, a portion of the general plan, that doesn't apply to the city today.
Can I interrupt you for one minute, please?
Yep.
I understand where you're going with this, but I want to just stick to the four items right now. And at the end, you'll have your chance to talk about generalities of what we're doing. If we could just stick with these four items right now, so we can move forward. Would that be okay?
He led off with a carryover from the last meeting, so are you asking to wait?
We're going to do that toward, at the end, after we go through each one of them.
Okay.
Okay. I promise you'll have a chance to talk about that.
Great.
Okay.
Perfect. Then I will talk about the walls. I think staff made some really good suggestions, and they gave some really good examples of the walls. I would ask that you do consider a caveat, because not all of these apply to every single parcel. In fact, in some regards, you have it in reverse. You have the more restrictive ordinances or concerns in areas that most people won't see, where you're less restrictive in the main parts of the city, married to Hot Springs, and the 15 freeway is a good example, that really tall wall. And I agree with all the statements you've made. So if you're in a parcel, and again, I think this is aesthetics, you're trying to screen an atrocity, a visual site. If that's the case, if you're building a wall where nobody can see it, what difference does it make? Because there's a lot of property owners in the rural residential areas where they can, they can build a 50-foot wall, and nobody would ever see it, and it would benefit their property. If nobody can see it, what difference does any of this make? So maybe put in something at the determination, or the determination of your planning director and an appeal to the council or planning commission if need be. So they have the ability to still meet what you're trying to do here, because there are many, many areas where they would never see the wall, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Klein. And Klein.
Chris, could you put the cover page back up, please?
Sure. Cover page?
Yeah, with the...
The first page, the cover page?
CA 1.1.
PowerPoint, Chris?
Yes, PowerPoint, sorry. Let me go back to the beginning.
Okay, are we going to go back to what Allen was just about to talk about, too? Because if that's the case, I'm going to ask you to wait till the end on that.
I heard you the first time. Thank you. So you'll see the date that this started, 2021. And I appreciate what staff is trying to do here. But we are so going down a rabbit hole, talking about, now we're not even talking about hillside. We're talking about walls outside of the hillside area. And I appreciate your comments, Mayor Warren, about irrigation and these colors. I mean, we are so far offline of what this started as, and what property owners are being held hostage, as what I've called a quasi-moratorium, on selling a property, developing a property, because our current hillside ordinance is indefensible. And it's been four years, actually longer, that we're still going down this rabbit hole. And so keeping it to the walls, this should come after we decide whether or not, what we're going to do with the parcels that are subject to the hillside ordinance. More specifically, you know, I believe that politically, it's a very slippery slope where you guys are going on these details, on colors and things. What's next, the color of a house? I mean, we all talk about conservative values and property owners' rights. I think you're going down a real slippery slope. There are things that come into play, material availability, cost, you know, expense on certain materials and things. If you're all building your own homes or walls, is that something that you want to be held to? And that's the standard I think maybe you should ask yourselves. On a technical question, which I'm a little surprised that was not asked, but if we're having to plant these walls, which I agree with, does that count as landscape percentage? So if I have a huge wall, like, let's talk about Hot Springs, as we brought up, if that gets to count as landscape percentage, that means actually on the flat ground, we're going to have less landscape. Is that what we want? Think you need to answer that question, but we need to answer the bigger question so that we can bring this to an end and make a decision. And the way you do that is you make the finding that the goal has been met. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comment?
Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to bring it back up to council for further discussion on these items only. Is there any further discussion on? Seeing none, we're going to move on.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so our focus topic two will be on hillside areas, desirable hillside retaining wall standards related to terracing and heights. Kind of covered that a little bit already. Why is it important to have high criteria as it relates to retaining walls? Standards for height and appearance are essential because they balance safety while addressing the natural character of an area. Height limits help prevent overly-sized walls or visually dominant walls. This is our current requirements in the hillside areas. So what is currently allowed is you can do a six-foot-high wall. It has to be then a step back of six feet, and you can do another six feet. You can't have more than two used together, and there's going to be some policy questions about that at the end here. The standards do not explain the ability to use this approach more than one time currently. In the hillside area also, with front yards, they have some extra limits. Each wall can only be three feet high, and there's a step back of three feet for landscaping. Some walls in these front areas can be higher, if it's part of a building, if it's built into the house, say it's on the edge of a hill. And walls adjacent to buildings, the materials and colors should look similar to what's next. There's natural stone that's encouraged. This isn't the code currently. I just wanted to kind of go through that. Some pros and cons with this topic. Having terrace heights set up that has multiple levels prevents slippage, can soften the visual impact of height, as it provides opportunities for vegetation on those different terraces. It's easier for the homeowner to maintain over time. Some cons, it can take up more space, it can reduce the usable lot area potentially, and can't be implemented in a more constrained area. Say your lot's narrow, you might have some constraints there. So there's pros and cons. For non-hillside areas of the city, so small walls don't have many rules currently. You can have up to four feet in a setback. Walls can be up to six feet with a setback so long as it faces inward. Say if you have a parking lot or something downslope from that, that's how that currently is set up. Walls over six feet have to follow the building setback rules as a house. And then just for reference, we do have some criteria with fencing here. In the front yard areas, you can have up to three feet, six feet's typical elsewhere. There is this provision there where fences can be up to 10 feet tall, provided they meet the setback standards for the zone. It can be taller than that if it's approved by the director. This is our recommendation. For retaining wall design, does not include landscaping. Staff recommends that a minimum six-foot step back for walls is at 12 feet high. That was a suggestion at one of our DAG meetings a while back, having a 12-foot-high wall, and then you could do a step back of six feet as like a maximum sort of situation. Currently, retaining walls may be built up to 10 feet or more with director approval, so long as they're outside the required setbacks. We should establish a clear maximum height, if that's preferred. Using terracing setbacks can break up the appearance. However, if landscaping is incorporated into the wall design, staff recommends allowing a greater wall height, as the added vegetation can help reduce the visual impact and soften the wall's appearance. So this, and continuing with this, we'll wrap this part up. Staff recommends more flexibility by possibly removing the three-foot front step back and allowing more than two walls, while keeping the step backs equal to the wall height. As in non-hillside areas, adding landscaping to the wall may allow for taller walls. So those are kind of your themes. These are our key policy questions here. First one being, should a minimum six-foot horizontal step back be implemented at 12 feet in on-hillside areas? Should more than two walls be allowed in a step fashion? And should the maximum wall height and landscaping setback remain at six feet? The third question here, should a wider landscape area between walls allow for increased wall heights? And what should define acceptable heights in both hillside and on-hillside areas? And the fourth and final question here, should the current restrictions on front yard retaining wall criteria in hillside areas, specifically the three-foot one, be removed to allow greater flexibility? And we'll walk through those same items, and I can go back to anything. I know there was a lot of information here.
I was trying to take all this in. There's a lot here. Okay. Do we have some questions on these items from council? Councilmember Holliday, you'll start us off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back on slide 24. As I've run into this myself, where is the front yard on a rural property?
This is your first twen, well. So it's going to be the narrowest part of the lot that fronts the street, or potentially the driveway access if there's no street access?
Well, the street the driveway is off of. Well, that would make sense. Because it's not, I think, front yard needs to be defined for a rural area. Our entire code is written for tract homes. We don't have a rural standard anywhere that I've found. And when you're talking hillside properties, those aren't tracks. They're rural properties. And if we're going to do this, we need to have some definitions that apply to those particular, unique circumstances. Because the picture you're showing of the front yard is where the house faces, that's the front of the house faces the street because it's a tract home, even if it's a custom home. But people, and my house too, the back of my house faces the street.
You told us we couldn't put in a pool, because it's in the front yard.
It's in the front yard.
Put a pool in the front yard.
Yeah, so the whole term "front yard" in this context needs to be looked at, is my point. And I'd like to get an answer to the speaker's question about, are we anticipating giving credit for wall landscaping to the landscape percentage? I would hope not. Has it even been considered?
So what I would say is, and I'm the director, so I get to make these interpretations for the code. So you've got two standards you're talking about. You've got, you know, a landscape screening, what I would call a screening requirement for the vertical wall, which is separate from a landscaping lot coverage requirement.
Okay. That's, that's what I would have hoped. I didn't think it was a question, but since it was brought up, I wanted to clarify that for sure.
With the mayor's permission, Mr. Holliday?
Sure.
Just clarify, if I'm a developer, and that option is on the table, and it's obviously more expensive, if I don't get any type of credit, why would I ever do that and make the city more beautiful?
Because it's required.
So you're, okay, we're going to require the landscaping on the wall, and?
For that, for those high walls, we talked in the last session, that we would require landscaping for those, yeah, it's mandatory.
Okay.
Not optional.
Can I, can I interject? I might add, and David could elaborate, but there's some instances, too, where if what you're after is screening on a constrained site where the wall is near the sidewalk, and you would typically require trees, if the wall behind it is basically a massive canopy, you might not need both, right? So it could suffice as screening, but then that tree, if it's needed to meet the total landscaped area, could be elsewhere on the property. So you still maintain a certain amount of landscaping, but you might not need a tree right in front of that green wall.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that's possible. I mean, we have separate, a separate standard that deals with, you know, trees, the number of trees on a property.
But the exchange for a taller wall could be, you know, you've got to provide this green screen landscaping for it. So if you want to stay at six feet, like, for example, there's no landscaping requirement, but if you want to go taller than that, then you've got to mitigate the impact if you provide the landscape screening.
Yeah, that makes sense. And just putting this out there with all of the legislation coming for what you can plant, fire code, that's just getting more and more restrictive and prohibitive. Is there danger of this being a direction we're going, if it may be, you know, the rug being pulled out from under us for, you know, we don't want any landscaping, because everything catches on fire?
Well, yeah, if they don't, if they change the rules of what plants can be planted, right now, there's the list of plants you can plant, because I've just gone through it for my new house, is pretty extensive. And they've got ground covers, they've got shrubs, they've got trees.
You have a lot of options.
You have a lot of options currently. Now, if the fire code changes, then we may have to revisit it again. But right now, that's not an issue. But I get the concern. As far as the key policy questions go, it's very challenging. Again, the question before, should the current restrictions on front yard retaining walls? Again, that goes to a front yard. Where is the front yard? Because under the current definition, I could put a 10-foot wall behind my house that's in the front yard, per the description of what Mr. Chantranxu just gave me. But it's behind my house.
Outside the front setback.
It's outside the front setback.
Yeah, you could go as, yeah.
But it's behind my house, and I've only got a three-foot retaining wall back there. But technically, I could go to a 10-foot.
Yeah.
I don't know how, I don't know how we make this, because what I'm looking for is more site-specific. We can have guidelines, we can have, you know, this is what our intent is, but until somebody comes, because these properties are all going to be unique. You're not going to find a code that fits every property out there. And if you try and squeeze that box and get everything into where, okay, it's all here, it's not going to apply to anywhere. And then they won't be able to develop. And that's not, not what we're looking for, because I know most of my colleagues agree that property rights should have a right to develop. We just need to make a minimal amount of code to where they're not developing an eyesore. So I don't know that getting into the weeds about a specific height on a rural property. Now, if you want to talk about the rest of the city, that's a whole different question.
So maybe in non-hillside areas, the tract home areas that we're talking about, maybe doing like a step in those situations?
And I have no problem with more than one tier, which I know was one of the questions. Some of those terraced landscaping with four or five terraces for a very hilly property that has a house on top, look very nice. What's wrong with that? So I have no problem with having more than one terrace compared to what we have here. Should a maximum, a minimum six-foot horizontal setback be implemented at 12 feet in non-hillside, non-hillside hillside areas? Is that a double negative?
Should just be non, yeah. Sorry about the typo there. Should just be non-hillside areas.
Okay.
Yeah. And that was suggested at our, one of our development advisory group meetings, because we were trying to figure out kind of a, what's a reasonable threshold for industry? And that was what was suggested.
A minimum of a six-foot horizontal step back.
So at 12 feet, you would go back six feet?
So a 12-foot-high, you could go back six feet?
Yeah.
Again, if it's in a non-hillside area, you're talking about tract homes.
Yeah, yeah.
A 12-foot, a 12-foot wall in a tract environment would be monstrous.
Yeah, maybe that's too high. I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's six feet or something like that. I mean, maybe it's—maybe it's six feet or something like that.
Yeah, I mean—
This was just what—this was what was suggested by industry.
Yeah, a six-foot wall between homes—I don't care where it is on the property—is pretty decent height.
Yeah.
And I think you said that the code allows the director to have a variance to go up to 10 feet in a track home?
I believe it's citywide right now.
And that was something about wrought iron or something like that?
There's a thing in the walls section. It's—we have—we have like—we have two sets of criteria in different places, and that's part of the problem with this whole code situation.
Yes.
We've got conflicting standards.
Yeah, I think we need to look at a standard that applies to the whole city and then ask the question, should something else be different for the hillside areas?
Okay.
And the way this section—the first section was great. The way this section's kind of merged together is kind of convoluted to me.
Okay.
Because like I say, the hillside areas, if somebody wants to put a retaining wall, are going to be unique. They're going to have to retain a lot more than any track home would. And depending upon the site is going to be dependent. So I would like to see the code have some more flexibility with director discernment.
The only thing I would say is with new state law, we unfortunately have to be more objective and prescriptive of what the standards are for an applicant, because they can go to HCD and say, oh, this is unclear to me. How do I do this?
And that's why I say that the code should be more about what the goal is, what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
And if somebody wants to put a 50-foot terraced wall that leads up to their property and its landscape, and it looks nice, I wouldn't have a problem with it. So we've got to figure out a way for the code to reflect that that's not subjective.
Thank you.
That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Holiday. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would agree. This section is a little bit more confusing. I just have a couple of little questions here. If the wall is 12-foot tall, a six-foot setback for you to have another wall? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
And that would be the maximum. So if there's a lower threshold, we could definitely entertain that.
So I'm just trying to—one of our neighbors built an invisible wall pool, and that would be considered a wall? Because that wall is 12-foot tall for the drop to come down to where their driveway is. So how—is that something that, like, the director would be able to help them with?
I think it'd be an accessory structure.
So it's different than a wall?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just—because it looks like a wall, right? So from my perspective, it's a wall, so—a pretty wall, but a wall. Okay. And then I think that—do you want these questions answered? Or shall we—I mean, I agree with Councilmember Holiday when it's front yard, backyard, because I'm backwards. My house sits wrong. And we've had issues with coming to the counter and trying to put a pool in our front yard, which really faces the road, but it's really our backyard because our house sits backwards. So I think that some clarification of that, even, you know, in other policy that we have—pools for one.
Find front yard.
What?
We need to define.
Define what a front yard is, yeah.
Yeah.
For a rural area. And I think the pictures that you show, those are average six-foot in between them for the green space. I don't think we should allow the walls to go any higher.
Yeah.
And I would think that we're pretty consistent with what's between the walls. I think a six-foot between the walls. But I'm no engineer, and I don't know what design standards are. But I think that aesthetically is what I know, and I think that that would be attractive. So I look forward to hearing more about this, and maybe my fellow colleagues commenting on it as well.
Councilmember Stone or Lavelle, do you have any comments?
Just, you know, systemically, it seems like this section does need a little more pulling out of the rule and definitions and track home, as Mr. Holiday said. And really, those are two different goals. They should be two different goals for the city in this type of approach, but that's just kind of overlaying that.
I agree with that, too. And we do need to be specific. So I think it's very important that we do define what a front yard is in rural and regular. So that way, there is no—there's no margin of error or questions.
Yeah.
Or as City Manager Clifton suggested, don't define front yard in rural area. You don't have a front yard.
That's possible.
Because I don't have a front yard, per se.
Right.
I have a house in the middle of a bunch of land like—
Yeah.
—Council de Forest—Councilman De Forest once. And my front yard is mostly my driveway.
And the other part about the screening of the wall and landscape, I do believe that needs to be two separate areas, two separate policies or whatever you're going to make them, because one should not—in my opinion, one should be landscaped for the development, one should be landscaped or screened for the wall. Two separate issues.
Okay.
So I wouldn't want those to be together.
Okay.
That's my comment. Anything else? Okay. Do we have any comments on these four questions from the—come on up, Mr. Long.
We're in a workshop, right? Not a council meeting?
We are in a workshop.
Okay, just wanted to confirm.
That's why we're going back and forth on all of this.
So I wanted to echo Councilmember De Forest and Holiday's comments. I'm also in a rural residential, as you most know, and I have either three front yards or three backyards, depending on how you want to look at it. So appreciate the flexibility there, and I think a lot of the homeowners in rural residential area are like that. One other thing to consider, if you play this out—and I know we're going to get into landscaping next, and I don't want to get off—I don't want to get hit with a glove again, so I can—I can take it. I can take it. But consider if you play this out with retaining walls, rural residential areas, we're going to need that 50-foot retaining wall if, say, you're on a quarter acre pad with a two-to-one slope. Considering setbacks, especially with what you're going to pass at the second reading tonight under the WUI ordinance, the state of California, I've got to have 100 feet before I plant—or 30 feet before I plant anything in 100-foot clearance. Well, with a 15-foot setback from my house, two-to-one slope, 100-feet setback, that tree that I have to plant for screening in the next section is going to be 100-foot down the hill. It's not going to screen much at all. So I'm going to need that big retaining wall just to provide the screening to meet the aesthetics issues that I think we're all talking about. Thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Thank you. I'm going to repeat again what Alan just said and what you guys have talked about and about the front yard, side yard and things, and I don't—it's not defined. And I—while I very much like David and have a very good relationship with him, so I've been the benefit of his favorable discretion. I don't think that's something we should rely on, because we never know who's going to be in that seat. And like Councilmember De Forest's house, three of you have been to my family's ranch, and our house is built the same way. So I think the way around that is you don't define it as a front yard. If you want to define something, you say the street side, because our backyards face the street. And if that's what you want, and that's something that we can do in the code. But again, we're getting down the rabbit hole on so many other issues and not the issue that it's hand. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Council, I bring it back up to you for any further discussion, or are we in agreement on what not only you have said, but what our speakers have also said? Would that be—I'm looking for heads here. Yes? Okay. Does that give you some direction?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to kind of dissect the issue a little bit more.
Okay.
And we'll come back on this one, I think, a little bit more and have—
That would be great.
—some recommendations there.
Okay, thank you. You can move on.
All right. So our last focus topic is landscaping. So our current requirements, our use of native plants, this helps development blend in with the natural environment. Restore—it also—the code calls for restoring natural planting patterns, replacing what was removed, using erosion control, keeping natural areas intact where possible. Landscaping visible in shared areas should be provided, and providing that defensible space with fire, of course. These are just some of the pros of using landscaping with new—you know, as part of the aesthetic in hillside areas. It helps stabilize slopes, can improve water absorption. Trees, shrubs, ground cover can visually soften retaining walls, graded slopes, and other structural elements. Some of the cons, in fire-prone areas, certain vegetation may increase wildlife hazards if not properly maintained. Cars ongoing care can take several years for establishment. Taller structures may not be fully hidden by landscaping, especially in the early years. We kind of touched on this already. For context, we did talk about some alternatives to landscaping as the primary screening method. Use of earth-toned colors for buildings in these hillside areas, and also birmingham techniques. Those two options were not further desired to be explored. So after reviewing this, the council directed staff just to focus on landscaping as the primary screening method. Staff recommends here using landscaping as the primary screening technique, and by strategically incorporating these in concert with working with Mira Fire Rescue, we can help reduce those issues in hillside areas. And to wrap up this last portion, here's the key policy question. Does the council agree with the proposed approach to incorporate landscaping techniques for the screening of structures in hillside areas? And that's all I've got.
Okay. And I have nobody in the queue. Mr. Holiday, you have—do you have a question on this?
Um, I don't know.
Okay, I'll punt back to you in a minute. Councilmember De Forest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would agree that we want to utilize landscaping for screening as much as possible, but we know on the hillside, the tree has to be 80-foot tall to cover up the building, right? To screen it?
Yeah.
So I think that appropriate size of landscaping, I think that maybe we could incorporate that to—we don't want any of the small, little, teeny, tiny plants that might take 15 years to become a five-gallon plant. So I think that, you know, just putting some parameters on utilizing specific types of green room size-wise, that's about the only thing I would say in here. But yeah, I agree that we need to have utilizing the screening for landscape. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I do have one question before I bring it back to Councilmember Holiday. What is the new current setback rules? Is it—
The—I believe the zone zero is five feet around the structure.
Right, around the structure.
Where you can't have anything.
Okay. And then if you're in a rural area, what about natural landscaping? What is that? What is that defensive space?
I think it's—I'd have to get back on the specifics, but I believe it's like 25 or 30 feet to that degree.
Okay.
But I'll check with our fire official.
I'm just—was just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Holiday?
Yeah, and that's along the lines of questions I had to—
Put it up for you.
The—the thing that Alan Long mentioned, the thing that we're going to be approved later. My understanding was currently it's five foot from the house, no planting at all.
Right.
And then basically, a fuel mod zone for the next 30 feet.
That's what I've heard, too. Yes.
Is what we're—the second reading of the state law that we're doing now, is it changing that?
Well, I think we have some of our unique standards here. Fire would have to kind of respond to those things, but we can—we can talk—we can communicate with them a little bit more on that.
Because if you have to go 30 feet of no planting in a 100-foot fuel mod zone, you're not going to be able to screen something that's up on a hill.
Yeah, we may—we might be able to use some succulents, but I don't think that's going to be, you know, a final option, but—
Well, no, there's all kinds of plants that are approved in a very high fire severity zone. It's a question, if you can't plant anything for 30 feet, and in 30 feet, you could have 15-foot height change, what are you going to plant to screen the building? So we need to find out for sure before we move forward with this process—
Right.
—what that new law does.
Right.
If in fact it does what Mr. Long thinks it does.
Tall firewise trees.
Tall fire—well, you know, olive trees that I'm planting grow to like 35, 40 feet, so.
And shouldn't the two coincide with each other anyway? What the fire is required and what we are looking at doing?
Absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely.
We'd require a fuel modification plan with the plant submittal process.
Okay.
That's what we currently do. I have projects that have restrictions around the buildings with certain planting materials. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, the—
Yes.
With climate change and with the fire code that has changed very rapidly, I think to answer Holiday's question is that, right now, staff work closely with the fire department on every project for their plant list, but to address that point, no matter what you plant with a tree, the tree at full growth, the canopy has to be 10 feet away from the house. So you have to structure that. If the tree is going to grow to a 40-foot canopy, you're just going to stagger that setback a little bit farther away. It might reduce some of the proximity that we have with landscaping, but I think with the strategies is, we can still find landscaping appropriate for properties. It just will be a smaller list. Mira Fire Rescue have a existing palette that we rely upon, which includes shrubs, ground cover, and tree types, which is consistent with state law. But I would say, Mayor, more to come, and I think you'll listen tonight, that the fire code is—it's going to have some effects. Basically, the closer you are to the structure, the less we'll be able to do with that. So we are thinking through other alternatives for that.
Oh, great. That's good to know. Any other questions from council before I open it up? Gentlemen, do you have any questions in the audience? Come on up, Ms. Long.
So in regards to landscaping, I don't know exactly what the code says, but I do know it has changed to your—to your question, Councilmember Holiday. I think it's a zero zone, and that actually could be enforced where you're going to have to rip out your current landscape. It goes to that extent. So it's the—they made it its own section of the code. It's not incorporated into the fire code. It's the WUI, C-WUI-C. So it's a much different and much more teeth to it. You have a really good example of a house that was built on the second tallest hogback in the city that has absolutely no screening whatsoever, and there's no vegetation, and you can barely see it. It was—it was perfectly designed. The house—the original house was from the '50s. It actually burnt down in the Liberty Fire and was rebuilt about three years later. It's got—the pitch of the roof matches the slope of the hill. The color of the home and the roof match the color tones of the hillside, and you can barely see it up there. So something to consider if the screening with landscaping doesn't work out, there are other ways to mitigate that.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Now, I'm going to go down the rabbit hole. If we're going to open up the landscape, then we might as well—I've talked about this for several years. We have a tree preservation ordinance, and developers are required to mitigate for trees that they take out, including invasive species such as eucalyptus, which are very high in fire. And as long as we're doing this, then rather than penalizing developers and homeowners for taking those trees out, making them mitigate, I believe they should get credit for doing that. So if you're going to open this up, then let's go ahead and tear it all the way open, and let's do it. That's on this section. Are we going to comment on the broader, or when do we do that, Mayor Warren?
I'm going to ask in just a second, okay? I'll bring the write back, okay? Okay, no problem. Problem. So we're going to get back to these items right here. Are there any further questions or discussions from council? And it looks like Mayor Potam has something.
I guess this is for Mr. Clifton. With Mr. Klein's comment just now, would that credit come through the fire update, or would it be through this venue here or a venue like this?
I mean, it's really, I think, a land use requirement that they mitigate for the loss of trees, so you'd be amending that section of code. You could give direction in light of the kind of conversation we're having here with hillside. And I think the reason actually staff has even asked you in other instances, should this apply citywide, is because at some point, we start to look at it and say, maybe this is a standard they'd be interested in more broadly. So you could certainly give that kind of direction, then we'd figure out what to bring back.
I do—I'd like—with his comment and to not butcher the language, whatever we can come up with to make that happen in terms of a direction or a policy, I'd like to definitely have that on the next topic or next conversation for this.
So—if I understand what Mr. Klein said, if they have to take out a tree because it's such a fire hazard, do they have to take it out, or—
If I may?
Go ahead. Yeah, so if it's in the way, tell me—
As an example, the Wyndham site, right? So there was a stand of eucalyptus trees, and fire hazard, fall hazard, and we had to get a permit to take those out, and we had to— to get a permit to take those out, and we had to do an arborist report, an inventory, if you will, and an appraisal. And when they come through to develop, they are going to have to mitigate. And if they can't mitigate on site, I have another project that was approved, and there were so many trees that we couldn't mitigate the number of trees on site, it would have been a jungle. So that client had to write a check to the city, I think, for $25,000.
Okay.
And it just, it seems to me that, that we're double-dipping, right? If we're trying to eradicate a invasive species and that is a fire hazard, then why are we getting, you know, monetary value for that? There's mitigation by removing the hazard.
Okay, thank you. Justin?
I was only going to add that I think what you really have here is something you've seen in a lot of policy areas, which is some tension between two different goals. One goal is to maintain an urban forest, and the other goal is to mitigate fire risk. They're not necessarily, you know, mutually exclusive, so I think if you had guidance that says pulling out trees that pose a unique fire risk is good, but it's also good to try to maintain the kind of canopy landscape that makes an urban forest nice, you end up somewhere. I don't, maybe that's less than a one-to-one replacement, maybe, but when you start to say getting credit for removing trees, if you're removing trees, and maybe, I don't know what the credit is exactly, again, maybe it's against what you have to plant, or maybe it's monetary or whatever, but just keep in mind, one of the other competing goals is to maintain an urban forest, and a lot that's invasive species or native species still provides shade and other things that have value that I think are the purpose of the mitigation. They're just different goals.
On, on that topic, I mean, it seems like a lot of the, the credit per se would be not making them go through the studies and the findings and the, hey, cut the tree down, and then here's some options to help plant something else in the story.
Maybe simplifies it.
And especially if the values have changed to where there's, there's less priority on something like maintaining an urban forest, you can certainly do that. Again, it's just to recognize that those two things are a little bit in tension, and perhaps if the landscaping coverage and the other things are satisfactory, then you don't really need to consider what was removed, only what's kind of planned to do the course of development, but, but those are things you just might want to take a detailed look at to understand the implications of doing that, you know, more broadly across the city.
And having an arborist come out is, is for one reason, one reason only, that makes sure the right ones get removed and the wrong ones stay, the right ones stay and the wrong ones get removed. I mean, I don't know trees from trees, so, so I mean, you know, that's, I'm assuming that's why the arborist comes out. Okay, any further discussions on this right here? Okay. Do you have the directions that you need on everything that we have discussed so far? Pretty much? No, yes?
I believe.
There's a front yard. Is it the street?
Yeah.
There is no front yard. Okay. So then, at this time, I would like to give our two speakers an opportunity to talk about anything regarding the hill ordinance that they would like to at this time. So we'll start with Mr. Long. Would you like to come up? They'll put three minutes on the clock in just a second for you. Thank you.
So, as I was saying, what carried over from last meeting didn't seem to include some of the things I heard. One, Mr. Holliday was very clear on addressing the core issue in the general plan, and that didn't make the list at all. However, specific plans, who I don't remember one person ever coming to any of these workshops or meetings from a specific plan, was taken out. It's very clear in the bullet point, says specific plans will not be subject to the updated ordinance. What we've been talking about, and I've been to every single meeting except for one when this first started over three years ago, is the developed land that's not in its natural setting to be excluded. But what we got as a bullet point, it says, we're going to be, those parcels will be a layer within the hillside map. Well, that really clears things up. What the heck does that mean? A layer. In that same meeting, when you just excluded the specific plan, I said, yeah, that's a great idea, why open that can of worms? Even though staff has consistently stated that the hillside great ordinance has not consistently been applied, probably reasonably to assume some of those specific plans didn't have it applied, but they're excluded. My plan has been developed, and many others in this area have been developed, there's no arguing that, but yet we're a layer, not excluded. So I'd ask just to clarify, because what I heard you all say, we should be excluded, just like specific plans, but that didn't make the list. The other thing, I have a question regarding the language in Land Use 15-1.1. I'll read it for you, it's in your staff reports, on page two. Encourage the preservation of natural and visual resources within the Los Elmo materials such as rock outcroppings and scenic views of local hills and the valleys. I haven't heard one bit about the valleys. Can someone define what the valleys are? It's, it's in the context of the hillside, but yet you're taking this ordinance that used to apply citywide and excluding the city, which I would think is the valley, and only applying it to these ridgelines. How is that equitable? Please, someone ask the question, what, how are we, how are we defining the valleys in this context of the land use? Again, you have a general plan that was 20, over 20 years old, where this is derived from. We didn't develop how we thought we would, we didn't apply it when we should have applied it, and now we're here trying to put the burden on the backs of a few parcels who take on MSHCP and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
I think the comparison I'll make is what you guys were up against when you had to increase DIF, right? Previous councils kicked the can down the road, kicked the can down the road, and you guys were left with making the decision, right? Staff has done a tremendous job, and no means do I have, hopefully I haven't communicated that I'm upset with staff or criticized them. This is just, it's gone on too long, it's too convoluted. As Alan just said, we didn't develop as we thought. You know, I think we've preserved what we have, what we can, some have been missed, many have been missed. So there's the equitability question. I think that a finding can be made, that the goal has been met with what remains. And so to get out from underneath this that's been going on for four years and looks like it's going to be going on for much more time, considering how far abreast we have gotten, I think that that's the direction that you all should consider, and if you agree, that you should give staff that direction and the city attorney to start coming up with findings that you can make, that that land use element has been met. And then you can get into these other things citywide on walls and landscaping and those things, with one caveat. The one specific plan that has not been developed, that I've talked about, then we can address the hillsides in that specific plan. You can open that specific plan up and make an amendment to that specific plan. So if my direction or my suggestion is not completely clear, right, I'm asking you to, if you agree with what Mr. Long and I have said, and to move off of this and bring this to a conclusion is, direct staff to make the findings, to come forward with findings that you can make to find that this land use element has been met, as it was written at our original general plan. Once that's done, the hillside ordinance goes away because it's been met, and then you can address whatever, if you agree with me, on the specific plan or specific plans that have not been developed yet, we can address those hillsides in the specific plan. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. I'm going to bring it back up to council. Mr. Clifton?
Would you like me to address certain component pieces of the public comments, or just generally?
Whatever you.
Sum up?
Whatever, yeah.
So certainly, I think, we even started this revised approach to considering the hillside ordinance in bits and pieces with the question that was just posed by both of these speakers in mind, which is, is this necessary? Should it apply in certain places? Should it apply citywide? Should it not apply at all? And if it doesn't apply at all, as I mentioned at the beginning of this conversation, we're done. You could reach that conclusion at the beginning, you could reach that conclusion at the middle or end. One of the reasons we're at the point we are today in considering some of the design standards is because I think intuitively, it feels like it might, it might, some of these things might be a little different on hillsides that are very visible from a vast majority of the city or a good portion of the majority than they are in very specific areas, where if you don't drive past it, you may never see it. But it'd be just as viable for the council to conclude that we think the standards should apply equally everywhere, in which case there's no need to differentiate between the hillside. Going back to a concept in the general plan that refers to the valley floor and the hillside, you could say that the general land use code, as it's been implemented, was originally designed everywhere, and then, at some point, hillsides seemed like they should be treated a little bit differently because of that visual impact. Again, we've talked about this a little bit, but a lot of what land use standards are doing is addressing impact. That's true when you differentiate commercial and residential property, and it's true in lots of other contexts. The, the situation with hillside really is the impact of view. I mean, if we're, if we just want to get right down to it, and, and we see in the pictures that have been presented today in our neighboring communities, that those standards can have a big impact on view. Great big walls, monocolored walls, non-lanscaped walls versus some of these pictures that had really different standards. But again, if you decide those standards should apply equally everywhere, then I think we are kind of at the point where we'd say, we're not, we're no longer differentiating between those hillsides and those valley floors, and they can have the same standard instead of a different standard. That is not a right or wrong, that is a preference, and I think it's one that is best viewed through the lens of impact. Hillside development typically does, and universally, and I shouldn't say universally, it's very common in land use codes that it's treated differently because it has a different impact. The same way that some other areas, dense biological areas, stream beds or flood zones are treated differently, for different reasons, but there you have it. So I think it's viable to go in any direction you want. The path we're on assumes that there's a reason to be at least slightly different in some of those standards. To the extent you agree, then we get down to something like looking at the developed versus undeveloped properties. Again, as I mentioned in the beginning, if the, if the difference in standard is minimal, then it might make sense to apply it universally within the hillside area. If that standard difference between the valley floor, if you will, or the standard land use code and the hillside standards is significantly different, you might want to be more generous creating exemptions for developed or already disturbed properties. That, again, is kind of a policy discussion. We haven't had that one yet because we thought it was appropriate for you to start to decide if some of these standards should apply broadly, which you've given some of that feedback, or if there are standards that are really specific to the hillside. And then we think a nice follow-up question is, for properties that are developed in part but still have the potential for additional development, because if they don't, then this is a moot point.
Right.
The only reason to be exempt from those standards, the only value in that exemption is that you still could and would develop something, right? So in those cases, what would you choose to do? That, that's a question we still intend to address if we're, if we remain on this path.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to go turn it over to our city attorney.
I just wanted to address the comment by both the speakers about making findings on the general plan policies and then having that be done. We couldn't do that in just the hillside ordinance. The council would need to open up the general plan and have a general plan amendment to change something in the general plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that. We're going to come back for questions. We have seven minutes to wrap this up, so we'll start with Mayor Potam Lovell.
I'll try and be brief. You know, if you drive south down the 15, you see the lovely hillside of the city to the south, that I can certainly say, I would never want to see that happen to Marietta. And to protect that statement, but also not making someone jump through a thousand hula hoops to do a barn addition on a hillside because they live off of the slope of a hill that basically comes into the valley of what is our city, because our city is mostly valley, valley floor, I guess, is the language. I don't know how to, and I think my colleagues agree, I think those two things are the primordial soup of what we're trying to achieve, is that we do not want to look like Tijuana's coastline with, you know, houses on every hillside in every color, but we also don't want to get in the way of private property development. Now, if it's something zoned commercially back there, which I don't think there's a lot back there, then that's a whole different discussion on how we protect that. So I guess I just want to start with that. This is a very confusing topic, there's lots of different directions. I think that is by far the most important perspective to have when thinking about how these decisions are made. The, to Mr. Clifton, the design standards, I do like that we're going over these, can we not just adopt these without even thinking about what a hillside is? Like, this could be a citywide design standard, which is great, but to try and, well, that's a hillside, so now it has to do A, B, C, D, that seems to be the problem.
It, it, it could be, but interestingly, we had a conversation just a moment ago about the conflict, potential conflict between some of the fire defensible space standards and the screening standards. So in the event that you couldn't put the kinds of trees that would grow and screen a property, could you rely on something like one of our speakers suggested, like slightly restricted colors? You may have zero interest in doing that in my neighborhood, but interest on doing that in a hillside. So that's exactly kind of the premise of why we do this, is that there might not be many of them, but there might be some of those instances where you decide, okay, let's, let's go with something that blends in, even if it was only in the situation where you couldn't screen with landscaping, but we only need to do that on hillside where we're trying to, you know, camouflage a home. You have no interest in doing that in a regular subdivision where all you see is homes up and down the street.
So could, could you say, in the situations where the fire code needs to be met, then you can address it in these ways, leaving everything else?
Alternative aesthetic options.
Right? Everything else is applicable now with the caveat of, when you're dealing with that setback and the problems of trying to screen, then you have that conversation with very helpful, a helpful perspective from the city to the developer or the landlord, to not be restrictive and help them get it done, because if it takes that much of a setback, I don't know how you could do anything with the situation you gave of a quarter acre lot.
Yeah, and we could, we could use colors, natural occurring colors in that area to help at least soften it. I think that's an approach.
Because if we don't, the other answer is, hey, you can't develop, right?
And honestly, I think that's really what this conversation is, even thus far. Nothing's been a kind of proposed radically different standard. It's been things like, should the walls not be quite as high? Should, should, should we be a little more prescriptive in the aesthetic of the wall in a place where it's going to be seen by more residents? These are really the, a different way to ask these same policy questions, and you're helping give the guidance to balance, and what we're hearing is, we don't want it to be overly restrictive while at the same time accomplishing something in preserving these views. So things like colors, things like getting a little clarification on wall height and screening, those are the design standards, frankly, that I think are going to be at play, and it's not going to be radically different in the end than what we see, but I think you might find one or two where it makes sense to be different in the hillside area than everywhere else, which speaks to the reason to have a hillside ordinance.
And then the, the.
We have two minutes.
Two, oh.
And I have two more speakers.
Okay. Definitely want to, to Mr. Long's point, the layered versus excluded, I think if we're going to call them layered or call the, like, make them excluded from, from that if they're somehow designated layered, because it's.
Yeah, it was more for informational purposes to be in the map, so if someone lives there, oh, I don't, it doesn't apply to me. However, we're still displaying it, and this was to Mr. Klein's point, I believe, the last meeting. So it's just having that cross-referencing, that's, that's all that is.
All right. I guess I will pause from there, that's all I really want to say.
Thank you. Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for your time and presentation and information, and I greatly appreciate it. I just want to kind of just sum up some things. I think that we're all saying, and I, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but the standards are different in the hillside. Everybody says that, right? So we need a hillside ordinance. Yes, do I want it to go away? Has it haunted me since I was elected? Yes, it has. Do I want to have something clear so somebody knows what to do and then it's not so confusing? Yes, that's what. Yes, that's why we're having this fun workshop, to make sure that things are more clear and more precise for somebody to come build. But do I want my community to be beautifully aesthetic, especially when the properties that are left and the parcels are left are usually the hills, right? That's what's left. That's what costs more to develop so far. So I believe that our predecessors, the previous council members, were on the right path. And I believe that when they were putting the general plan together and said, we want to have this hillside ordinance, they were for the beautification of our city. And I think that we all come to the realization that it is needed. It is a different design standard. It is, there are many caveats when we look up that hill and we want to see, you know, a beautiful hillside, not crammed with houses that we can see everyone's backyard. So I think that the general plan preservation of the hillside ordinance is important moving forward. And I do, I know one of the speakers mentioned the layer, and I know Councilmember LaBelle also mentioned that. But the layer of the map is what, if something is not developed but has a specific plan, this, would it be affecting them?
It will be. That specific plan has all the criteria. So when the specific plan was adopted, hillside was something that was analyzed at that point in time. And you go to that specific plan, okay, this is what I have to do in that location.
And is there also the hillside ordinance mentioned in specific plans?
Sometimes it does. So we do want to have that cross referencing, so, oh, I have to go to the city's ordinance, this is what I need to do.
Right. So if we were to eliminate that, then there goes our design standard, there goes our control over our, is that true? If we say, you know what, we've met it, let's just open up with no ordinance, let's pass some ordinances for hillside. That's going to open up a whole caveat. Is that true?
There are some lots left in, like, Greer Ranch, I believe. Lennar has some lots there. I don't know if they're going to be developed or not, but it probably mentions, it may have mentioned the hillside standards in there as well.
And what about the vineyard?
The vineyard's another...
So, yeah, I'll just add that, you know, the zoning ordinance informs your general plan goals and policies. So I make the analogy, if the general plan goal is have a pretty house, the council has to decide through the zoning ordinance, what makes a pretty house? Is it a pitched roof? Is it, you know, gable end roofs? Is it dormers? I mean, whatever, whatever it is. So if there is no standards to inform the general plan policy...
Right.
Then it's going to be totally subjective.
So, and we don't want it subjective, right? That's, that's when we get a lot of things that we can't, you know...
We want clear direction.
We want clear, concise direction, yeah. So I'll cut it short because I know that Madam Mayor is hitting the gavel on me. So thank you so much again for your time. I appreciate speakers, and just bringing in a different perspective is also very important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday?
I'll keep it under 20 minutes.
No way.
How about 30 seconds?
Can you go back to that picture of the Marietta wall?
Oh, do we have to?
Yes.
The Temecula wall?
No, the Marietta wall.
The one that's in city district.
No.
One more.
You're not claiming it?
Or this one?
No, it's the one with landscape on it. Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa High Line.
That was, that was here.
Keep going.
Sorry.
It's here somewhere.
Valuable time.
Oh, yeah, here we go. Yeah.
This is an example of somebody that said, I'm going to follow the plan and I'm going to put landscaping on it. It was never intended to be maintained. As you can see, a good 60% of that is dead. To me, that looks atrocious. And yet, under the, what we're talking about, that would be allowed. And so to me, this picture is what not to do. Just FYI. In talking about going through this process, I think this exercise is valuable. If we get to the end of it and we say, well, you know, the, the design standards we're coming up with, there's only two or three that are different for the hillside, we can incorporate that into an overall city design standard. If we get to the end of this and we say, no, there's a whole list that's different, then we have a hillside ordinance. But I think this exercise, both citywide and for the hillside, is beneficial just to get to the end and see where we are.
I agree. Thank you.
So, great job, staff. I know it's, it's fun. It's not what the adjective I would use.
We're going to move on to Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Something that Mr. Klein had commented, where our, our city manager and I have had several discussions, is the language. We do know that it, it, it's all interpretation. And what's really, really important, when you all leave here and retire, the next group of planners that come in, I think that the, the language needs to be very clear. In addition, with, with the hillside ordinance, I think that property that's already been disturbed, and I am going to use Alan Long's property as an example, because I spent a lot of time up there and it is a beautiful piece of property. Do you think that there should be different standards for the properties that's already been disturbed? If he were to add on structures, it, it could actually mess up everything because he already has developed up there. And so that's my concern with properties that's already been disturbed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I agree, we need language that will go beyond all of us. And that it sticks.
And that's going to be one of our focus topics in the future, is the disturbed versus undisturbed.
Perfect. At this time, I'm going to close out the workshop and say thank you very much to everybody, and we are going to proceed to closed session. Madam Surti Clerk, would you please take a roll? Nope, don't leave.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem LaBelle?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present, and Madam Mayor, if I may, the city council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95B to considering, to consider the following workers' compensation claims, Weller and Schloss. The city council will also meet pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92 because there is significant exposure to litigation in one case. And Madam Mayor, there are no public comments.
Are there any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that, we're going to reset to closed session, and we will be back for a regular session at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome, everyone, to the November 18th regular meeting, and the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on three items as listed on the agenda. Item CS1 was regarding two workers' compensation claims, Weller and Schloss. On both matters, the council was updated, no reportable action. The third item was to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The council was updated, again, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. At this time, if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, lead led by Chief Henry, and remain standing for the invocation led by Marietta Police Department Chaplain Monty Jones.
[inaudible] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Powerheads, gracious God, we thank you for this day and for the privilege of living and serving in this community. Tonight, we lift up our mayor, our council members, and all who gather here to do the work of the people. Grant them wisdom to see clearly, courage to do what is right, and patience to listen well to one another and to the voices of those they represent. Help every discussion to be marked by respect, humility, and a genuine desire for the common good. We ask your protection and blessing over our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, and all who stand ready to serve in times of crisis. Guard them, guide them, and watch over their families. May the decisions made in this room tonight bring greater safety, justice, and compassion to our city, and may we each leave here a little more committed to being good neighbors to one another. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Okay. Hang on one second, I'm looking...
And Madam Mayor, may I just note for the record that all members of council are present?
Oh, I was, okay. Thank you. I was just going to ask for roll call because I know I missed it. Thank you. We're going to go just a little out of order right now, and we're going to start with our presentation of our champion for Marietta. A champion for Marietta is an individual who works or lives in the city of Marietta, who leads, lends a helping hand behind the scenes to make life better for Marietta. A champion for Marietta is considered an unsung hero who has made significant and measurable contributions to preserve and/or improve our community without being in the limelight. The fifth recipient of this award has been selected by Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember Holliday, will you please do the honors and announce your champion selection?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when the mayor first brought this idea up of the champion for Marietta, I was thinking, who would be a good candidate when it came my turn to make a choice? And I was thinking about kind of criteria, because that's kind of who I am, analytical. And I said, so this person would have to be somebody that selflessly dedicates themselves to the city and activities within the city without expecting anything in return. For me personally, I thought it shouldn't be a business owner, not that we have some great business owners that dedicate a lot of their extra time to the city that doesn't have anything to do with their business. But I was thinking, it should be somebody, just a citizen that lives here and loves the city and gives back to the city for their whole time that they've been in Marietta. And so my selection for champion for Marietta is Patricia Farmer, who is, who is now very upset with her husband and her friends because she had no idea that this was coming. I have, I have known Pat coming up on 30 years. No, we're not. It was before we were born that we met. And it was through the Marietta Valley Foundation that took over the Father's Day Car Show from Temecula, took over the Taste of the Valley from another organization. We seem to be collecting castaway projects that the Father's Day Car Show still survives to this day. Pat, along with her husband Lynn, were invaluable in making sure that that program happened. She also, well, you're going to hear a lot of it in a second because I'm going to read, I'm going to read your proclamation here. "The city of Marietta is proud to designate Patricia Farmer as a champion of Marietta. Her work throughout Marietta reflect a longstanding commitment to altruism and a steadfast dedication to placing the community first. Patricia Farmer has been a Marietta resident since 1995 and has since fostered the engagement and growth of youth in our community through the Marietta Valley Foundation and has provided enrichment to the Marietta community by spearheading events such as the Father's Day Car Show, which is now a beloved Marietta event. Her commitment to enriching the lives of families and creating a community one can be proud of moved her to be one of the founders and longtime board members of the Friends of the Marietta Library. With her leadership and hard work, the Friends of the Marietta Library has, was established to, was able to establish the Corner Bookstore and the Town Square Bookstore. As a volunteer at both bookstores, she earned the reputation of a knowledgeable and friendly helper of the people. Among the various events, contributions, and associations Patricia Farmer has been a part of, one of the highlights of her work is the Temecula Valley Women's Club, which does serve Marietta as well, where she has impacted many lives and helped guide women towards a future of hope. During her term as president, over $70,000 was raised to support their endeavors, including college scholarships, the Marietta and Temecula libraries, and a reentry support program for women trying to return to the workforce after long periods of unemployment or underemployment. Patricia Farmer's efforts exemplify a deep-rooted dedication to a community well-being and enrichment, which embodies the nature of a champion of Marietta, and is signed both by the mayor and myself."
You know, I married a military guy, and so we never got to settle in a place and enjoy everything. So when we came here, I grabbed it and wanted to get involved with everything that happened. And, boy, we're a great group, I tell you, and there's a lot of good things that we've done over the years.
Yes.
Not, not just, not me, everybody. Yes.
Takes a village.
Yeah. We should be very proud of everybody. But look at this. That's amazing. Thank you all.
Wait. It's home.
Oh, I do? Yes.
I can open it at night? No, it doesn't help with anything.
The police don't show up.
Congratulations. I know the look on your face is... Well, thank you all. Congratulations. And surprise! That's nice, yeah.
He doesn't need to go away. He just needs to stay. We're going to honor a man who's given so much to our department, to our kids, to our community. We're going to give retirement accolades to Corporal Matt Mazingo, and I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Matt, would you like to come forward? Where are you, Matt? Come on. Come on up. I will read this first. It says, "Whereas, Matt Mazingo has dedicated over 30 years of his life to the field of law enforcement, including 20 years and eight months with the Marietta Police Department, where he proudly served as a corporal for 13 years. And whereas, Corporal Mazingo began his career in public safety as a police explorer and reserve officer with the La Mesa Police Department, later serving eight years with the Chula Vista Police Department before bringing his experience and dedication to the city of Marietta. And whereas, he has been an active member of the California Association of Youth Courts and the National Association of Youth Courts, passionately supporting youth outreach, community mentoring, and guiding the next generation. And whereas, Corporal Mazingo has been happily married to his wife Natalie for 22 years, and together they are proud parents of two sons, Logan and Parker, who have been his greatest source of pride and joy. And whereas, his proudest accomplishment is being a husband and father, values he has upheld alongside his professional career with honor, integrity, and dedication. And whereas..." And whereas, after more than three decades of service in law enforcement, Corporal Mazingo will always be a part of the Marietta family, and we congratulate him on his retirement and wish him the very best in his future endeavors. Now there be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Marietta does hereby commend and thank Corporal, excuse me, Matt Mazingo for his service, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the residents of Marietta." Okay, we have, before we get into the presentations, we do have one public comment. And Mr. Vrooman, would you like to come forward?
You didn't know I was gonna get up?
No. Oh, no.
He invited me here, but he didn't know I was gonna... I just, you know, there's a lot of wherethes in that proclamation, but I just wanted to kind of share a little bit of the in-between of the wherethes and what this man has done in the years of his service to the city of Marietta. I had the pleasure of working with him for, I don't know, probably 15, 20 years here in Marietta before I retired. And back in 2005, I was tasked by the chief at the time to start up or join our Police Activities League, partnered with our Safe Alternatives for Everyone, our safe nonprofit group. A couple of years later, I was tasked by then-councilwoman Kelly Bennett, or actually commissioned or directed or voluntold to start a youth court. And we did that for several years. And we looked at Lake Elsinore and the city of Riverside. They had a robust program. We started it here. We joined with the sheriff's office in Temecula. And as my time and different assignments moved on, and we started many, many different other programs. We had Youth Accountability Team. And we just had a growing programs that really catered to the kids in our community, our most valuable resource. And so we had to find somebody to basically kind of carry that torch and take that over and really serve the community the best. And we picked Matt here to do that at the time. And he has taken it far beyond what it originally was. The youth court, we were nationally recognized last year in Memphis, Tennessee, much to this man who has taken the program nationally recognized. Our police, I'm sorry, yeah, our Youth Accountability Team and our program for PAL. He has an award named after him for the PAL officer. He's one of three people here. Our Safe Alternative for Everyone only has three people with awards named after them, and this man's one of them. The other ones are District Attorney Mike Hestron. So I don't know how you pulled that off, but you did such a great job that, you know, it's a perpetual award that we, he was the first one last year. And Carla Duñez was the one this year too, another Marietta officer. He has taken things to such another high level of service to the community here. It's just incredible. How many of you have been through our Citizens Academy? I lost my train of thought here. Yeah. I knew we had a lot of people here, many people who have served on our city council. He came with this idea to our admin team at Marietta PD. He says, hey, I'm thinking about doing this. And we thought, okay, another program? What's this all about? It is another regionally accredited program here that has been not only copied by our fire departments, Menefee PD, the sheriff's office, the city hall, all because of this guy right here that had an idea, and not just an idea, but he implemented it. And he's incorporated everybody in the police department into speaking with that. So it's been such a pleasure. I'm so happy for you. Congratulations on your retirement. Natalie, for all your years of support and entire Mazingo family. It's just been incredible. You've done such a great level of service, and I know it will continue. We have a great community and a great police department. Thank you, brother.
Don't even think about going. No, 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 stay put. Chief Henry?
All right, I had a lot to say about Matt. I think Mr. Vrooman covered a lot of it. The proclamation covered his career. I could stand up here for quite some more time and share everything that Matt's done for the career, I'm sorry, the industry of law enforcement and Marietta PD specifically. More stuff than I can even name off. And now you're continuing it, you know, fostering the relationships with the kids, teaching them, getting them invested in law enforcement, and can't say enough about you. We're gonna miss you. We do have some things for you, some more stuff for you from the city. We have this for you. You can go and open that. Not that time really matters when you retire, but...
Well, it matters.
That's right. It does matter. It's a nice little lot. And then on behalf of the department, a little acrylic for you.
Thank you very much. So I won't tell any stories. I promised I'd be pretty quick with this. But I'm the current team leader for our Southwest Cities Crisis Negotiation Team, a team that I personally believe wouldn't be around much if my good friend and mentor here, who I'm here at Marietta PD because of him. He recruited me. Won't tell any stories again, to know you have a fair share of those. But I do want to present him with this plaque on behalf of our Crisis Negotiation Team. Just to read it real quick. Matt started as a negotiator with the team since 2010. He wasn't a negotiator until 2021, took over as a team leader in 2020 and 2021, and ended up retiring here on 2023. So just really quick, and recognition of your dedication to the Crisis Negotiation Team and your service to the community, a role model, a leader, and a foundation for the team. Your legacy will continue to inspire. Thank you, friend.
No, you cannot go sit down yet. No, not yet. Before we give you our proclamation, I'm gonna ask council if they'd like to say a few words. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Corporal, thank you so much for always taking my phone calls and helping me with, and we've talked about this before here, A Day in Her Shoes, where we had two volunteers that had no idea what they were stepping into. And we did a virtual day of in the shoes of a peace officer. And it was, still today, my very best session. So I really appreciate your effort. With the Citizens Academy, it was still another wonderful experience in having you lead us. You're so professional. And my nephew, Jason, who was a deputy district attorney, worked with you in the youth court. And he has always spoken so highly of you and your dedication to the children. And he sends his warmest regards for you in your retirement. We are one of the safest cities, not just in California, but in the nation. And that's due to the dedication of all of our police officers that are here, but especially you. To have an award named after you tells us about your dedication to public safety. And we are the gem of the valley because of you and what you have brought to our community. So I want to wish you the best of luck with your retirement. And if you ever get bored, I promise you, I have things that I can task you with as a volunteer. So you have my phone number. So congratulations on your dedication to our community. We appreciate you so much, and God bless.
Dr. DeForest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What can I say? You know, when you think about Marietta, we say connected to community. Well, you are the epitome of that. You were so connected to everyone in the Citizens Academy. You made sure everyone was welcomed, and it was absolutely... My husband's in law enforcement, and I learned so much from you. I didn't tell him all that, but, you know, I did. I learned so much. I just want to say that you are an amazing Mariettan, and we're so glad that you were ours, and we're so proud to have you. And I know that your legacy will live on, and I know you touched so many people. And most important, being an educator to an educator now, you're gonna touch more lives. And what we need is more good people to go into law enforcement, and you're gonna make that happen. I know you are. I am so excited for your failure in retirement. It already happened, right? What did you say? Two days? Yeah, two, six whole days. He failed in retirement. So you had six days of retirement, Matt. So now you'll go on to serve those students at liberty. And we are so fortunate that you will change the future. So I thank you so much for being so kind to me. I think that was over and above, and being so willing to help me learn and educate me about Marietta PD when I first was elected. So I want to thank you for all of that, from the bottom of my heart. You're gonna do amazing things with the youth, and they are so fortunate to have you. So thank you.
Mayor Protown, Lavelle?
Well, unlike Ms. Stone, I never called you because I tried to stay out of trouble. I don't know you that well, but I know a lot about you through the community. And just to keep it short, I mean, look around the room. This is exactly what anyone should want out of a retirement ceremony. You should be very proud. And I'm honored that you were part of our city and still remain part of our city for the length of time you've been here. Your impact obviously is huge. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for everything you're still going to do for our community, and happy retirement.
They've said it all, but I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. When I met you, you were this, you were this man putting on this academy who knew so much, and I knew so little. And I am proud to have graduated under your leadership. You taught me safety measures, and I didn't know I needed to know. I watched you in youth court explaining to the kids, this is a second chance. And then in life, you don't always get second chances. And you gave them a chance to get out of their circumstances and be better people. You have leadership beyond measure. Your integrity should never be questioned, and your character is beyond anything that I could ever imagine. Thank you for being an inspiration. Thank you for being a leader. And thank you for being the best man I have had the honor of knowing for these last 12 years. Happy retirement. Get those kids on the right path and get them into our law enforcement. And just, God bless you and your family for a very good retirement and lots of fun too. Don't forget, there's fun in retirement too. Thank you. How about we give Ms. Proclamation and take pictures? Come on over here. Let's take a picture. You're welcome to.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. No, definitely.
She's gonna do my speech for me? Stand by.
You know, shit's gonna get real when the chaplain prays for respectful communication here. I just want to say, I know that everybody spoke about Matt's ancillary duties, all of, you know, the Youth Accountability, the Crisis Negotiation, the Citizens Academy. But you just, you never met him as a patrol officer. I worked with him over a dozen years as a patrol officer. He was always the go-to guy. He was always the first one to back up. He was always the first one who knew the law. He was the first one to run interference between me and admin staff. And I, you know, I just want to note that the chief didn't show up for his retirement. Didn't show up for mine, but I... And I just want to say, this is the man who would keep you guys safe at night. He knew the criminals. He knew what was going on. He knew the crime trends. He knew where to send his people. He knew where to get the best food after dark. He was just, I mean, I'm glad you guys appreciate all of his ancillary duties, but he was the backbone of patrol. He was the one that we went to and we relied on. And I just want to thank him for that, and all those years of being a friend and being a, just being a role model for us. Love you, Matt.
I think she said something about food. So on that note, I would like to thank everyone for attending. I truly appreciate everyone being here. So...
Go have fun.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Mayor, can we get a photo? Can we get a photo with his law enforcement partners?
With his law... Yeah, yeah, yeah. Come on down. Come on down.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, of course. Yeah, I'm gonna move to.
My retired law enforcement partners too, especially Jason Pedersen. Especially Jason Pedersen, retired law enforcement partner.
Okay, we're now going to move on to our last presentation for the evening. And this is being presented by Waste Management, calling Recycling All Stars. Hope we may have Robert Frederick, the Public Sector Senior Management with Waste Management, here to make a presentation, or two.
Thank you.
Did you like that?
Awesome. Well, good evening. As Mayor said, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Robert Frederick. I'm the local Public Sector Manager. I'm also accompanied by Ashley Perez. She's my local outreach representative as well. So I want to thank the council, city staff, as well as the community for the opportunity to present some highlights. So we are here today to celebrate America's Recycling Day. And before we get to the fun part and awarding our awardees, I wanted to take an opportunity to celebrate what we have done together as a city and as a community here in Marietta. And when I mean together, I truly mean together. This is a we achievement, and this is something that we all should be proud of. So we'll go to the next slide. All right. So, you know, what are we doing here in our communities? We're driving sustainability. And so one of the... We're driving sustainability. And so, one of the things that we've done, a lot of work on working together is really improving our infrastructure for our community. And so, what that looks like here on this slide, and I'm not going to drain this slide, we've made a lot of heavy investments to our community so that way we can participate in driving sustainability together. So you're going to see some things of our improvements in the El Sabrante landfill, as well as the Simi Valley landfill as well. Some of these upgrades have taken place over the last 18 months. And you'll see, most recently, we have our El Sabrante landfill, which we will be commissioning RNG. So all of the gas that's coming out of the landfill will actually be reused through a partnership that we're working on right now. Let me go to the next slide. All right. So what does this look like in numbers? I'm a big numbers guy. So when you look at our numbers here, you can see the most important thing is we are really proud to celebrate 100% compliance with SME 1383 here in the city of Marietta. That is a big accomplishment for us and a really key driver to this. The next piece is our community education partnerships. So you're probably going to look at this number, 580, and you're like, how can you do 580 educational outreach activities? So this particular outreach piles of a couple of different things. The great work that Ashley is working in our communities on a daily basis, but also goes to all of our site visits, our phone calls, all of our electronic communications, and all of our meetings that we are doing as well. And then the fun fact that I always like to talk about is what is this impact made in our communities? And let alone just in the city of Marietta, it is 42.8 million pounds recycled year to date that we have collaboratively worked together. So that's a great accomplishment. We couldn't do it, I'll have you go to the next slide, without connecting with our community. So you'll see some of the things that we've had, we've had the honor to work alongside in our communities. So a couple of fun facts, our community cleanups, which we do on a annual basis or by annual basis, we were able to divert 60,000 pounds of material, which in perspective, that is 18 blue whales. So I wanted to put it into like a cool perspective. You're always like, you know, pounds is great, but I did my little, my research. I'm like, what is the biggest animal that we could, you know, basically relate this to? So kudos to the community, the city, and our entire partnership for that. Some fun things, storytime with our driver at Marietta Public Library. So we had an opportunity to connect a couple of times this year with our little kids and get them excited about recycling. Marietta Fire and Barbecue, so that was a great opportunity that we got to connect with our community and really educate them on our recycling best practices. Touch a Truck, which everybody loves bringing the trash truck. So we had an opportunity to participate with Marietta Unified to do a career day. And then just some of the educational outreach pieces that you'll see here that we've done in our community. So everything from our community service guides to our self-service portals, to our recycle right workshops. But the fun thing comes to our Recycling All-Stars. So in honor of America's Recycling Day, we have two Recycling All-Stars that I wanted to highlight tonight. So I have one residential customer and I also have a commercial customer. I have a quick little blurb on each and then we'll invite them up. But before we invite them up, we also have a video which will play before bringing them up. So the first one is a residential customer. And I apologize if I'm saying your name incorrectly, but Keisha and her family on Aaron Court, we'd like to nominate as Recycling All-Stars and it's easy to see why. Keisha and her family aren't just known for her perfectly sorted blue bin on a weekly basis. They are known for their perfect timing. Every week, our driver notes that the cart is out on time, bright and early, ready for pickup. This not only allows our driver to maintain his route schedule efficiently, but also benefiting the whole community. Combining with the family's punctuality with the impeccably clean and separated materials with no contaminants and no bags, keyword, no bags, you have a definition of a five-star recycler. So we wanted to welcome up Keisha and her family for their dedication to being an on-time and recycling-right representative in our community.
Your husband here?
Come on outside. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we've talked about, we have another recipient, our commercial recipient. And this is the WM Lyles Company. So I'm going to read a short little blurb about WM Lyles and then I'd like to share a video as well to share with our community on the impact WM Lyles is making in our local backyard. So when we talk about Recycling All-Stars, the practice about sustainability is in everything that WM Lyles does. Immediately you think WM Lyles, right here in Marietta. They are famous for constructing, as one would say, the massive critical infrastructure projects for many different things like bioenergy, water treatment, that literally make every resource recovery possible across California. But it's important to know that their dedication goes deeper than that. Sustainably Infrastructure, they are committed to being an environmental steward, building projects that improve not only the quality of life, but also locally here in the city of Marietta. From their building practices from design to operation, and in our own backyard, their Marietta office, to their careful practices on job sites, which include recycling and reusing construction materials, and minimizing their shipping footprint, is truly the value of sustainability in our community. WM Lyles is not just constructing facilities, they're building a sustainable mindset from the ground up, making them a true leader in our community. We are excited to sneak peek into their operations right here in our own community. Can I have you play the video, please?
Hi, I'm Grant Gorley with WM Lyles Company. WM Lyles Company's been in business for 80 years. We've been a California-based contractor our entire time. We're still family-owned and we're embedded in the communities where we live and work. In 2019, WM Lyles Company wanted to strategically grow in Southern California marketplace. We chose Marietta because this is where we live. This is where the people that work for us live, in proximity to hotels and highways and other locations and services that can treat our people and our vendors better. As we started looking for an office and location, WM Lyles Company's purpose has been to build environmental projects for a sustainable future. As we look back across our history and what we wanted to accomplish, we look forward to what we wanted to be as we developed this office. When we first sat down with our architect, we told the architect we wanted to accomplish a handful of things. We wanted to lower the impact we have on our local environment as we build the construction of the building. We wanted to be paperless as we move forward. We wanted to have zero waste from plastics and paper products. And we wanted to assure that we take away any opportunity or the laziness to not recycle and reduce our waste. When you walk into the WM Lyles Company office, what you don't see are file cabinets. You don't see single-use plastic objects. You don't see paper cups. You don't see waste. We really were proud of eliminating that. So what you do get to see is live vegetation purifying the air. You do get to see exposed materials and raw materials, so we didn't have to ship or haul materials from far away to install here. What you do see is full-time use, full glass plates, full glass cups. You see water bottle fillers throughout, including conference rooms and other areas, so you don't have to use bottled water. You see waterless urinals. You see a dumpster setup that's very strategic, so that when you walk in, you have trash and then recycling and then green waste. In every single office, we have recycle bins. We have a food waste bin inside the kitchen. We took deliberate steps to assure that our people inside our community, inside our office, took the same steps that our company believes in, which is creating a better environment for a future world. So we're very proud of the office we have. We're very proud of eliminating waste. When you go outside, you're engulfed in the community and the nature. Marietta is a beautiful location. We have hillside views to the back, including the plateau and then the vineyard. You see that throughout. We put edible grapes, organic edible grapes, all the way around the office. We have a fruit orchard, an organic fruit orchard of 17 trees. We have live vegetation that's native to this environment that is easily sustainable and thrives. We wanted to give our employees the opportunity to not only enjoy the inside of the office, but take that step away, enjoy the fresh air where we're at, and walk around the orchard and the building to enjoy our surroundings. In closing, I want to say thank you to Waste Management and to the city of Marietta to giving us this great award and to recognizing the effort we put in to make this city better. Thank you.
Welcome up WM Lyles. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. If we could have both recipients come back up, the other gentleman come back up. Your council also has a certificate for each one of you. We are so honored that you have been chosen as the Recycling All-Star Award. And we wanted to give you something that you could let everybody know that we are just as proud of you as Waste Management is. So council, will you come down with me, take a picture?
So, hey, Jeff?
I'm going to talk about grapes. If you're going, I'm going.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you for all the good work you're doing. All right. We're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda? I have a motion by Councilmember DeForest and a second by Councilmember Stone. Please vote. Where's my thing? There it is.
Motion carries unanimously 4-0. And Madam Mayor, if I could note for the record that Councilmember Holiday is out with an excused absence.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our city manager update.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Council. I have a few updates for you this evening, starting with, I know over the last month or so, we've had a friendly, but not always so friendly competition with our city to the south, collecting items for military care packages for our men and women serving in the military overseas. And so, many people have donated items. And I know we had boxes here at City Hall, we had boxes at local businesses, and we were hustling to try to help communicate with the community that we were looking for, you know, certain items in particular, so that we could send a little bit of home back to our veterans. And I understand that we've wrapped up that friendly competition. And Madam Mayor, could you please help us to understand the outcome?
The outcome was Marietta won! So, at the packing event on Sunday, the room was filled with over 300 people. And they were packing all these boxes and the vibe in the room was just so cool. Councilmember Stone and I were just in awe, watching everything going on. And then we were kind of focusing on this tally board that they had. And people could still bring things in. So I brought extra stuff just in case. And I know other people did too. But we kept seeing the numbers go like this, but they never got close. We won with over 17,000, almost 18,000 items to their 15,000. So we really did really, really great. So we will definitely let you know when they will be picking up trash and where you can come and watch with all of us. But the biggest winner is our troops. Over, almost 40,000 items were donated. That's a win for our troops and a win for our communities together, who pulled together businesses and people. So, thank you, everybody that participated. And way to go, Marietta. You did it. Thank you. I'll punt it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to highlight another really cool activity that we had just this last week, which is the youth in government. Here at City Hall and a number of other facilities throughout the city, we had groups of second grade students from Buchanan Elementary come through and learn a little bit about their local government. So overall, 120 kids came through the hallways, most of them really well behaved. I hesitate to say too much, but I did hear one teacher tell a cute little second grader to, you know, "Take that out of your nose" or something along those lines. We had a lot of fun talking about the branches of government and other things. And it all ended with a meeting with the mayor and council members in council chambers. I know those kids had a really good time. And then, just want to make sure our communities, we're probably no surprise, but we have a holiday coming up. So next week is Thanksgiving and we will be closed on the 27th and 28th in observance of Thanksgiving. Hope everyone here in Marietta and beyond is also taking time to give thanks. And then, as always, we are connected by community. So to stay connected, please visit us anytime at marietta.ca.gov/Connect. And before we wrap, also want to have Brian Ambrose come up, our Community Services Director, who's going to tell us a little bit about special events.
It's my pleasure to provide you with a merry update on community services, special events this season. Fortunately, as the Department of Fun, this information won't be highly technical. No zoning codes, no fire codes, or talk about wildland urban interface. So in the immortal words of Marietta's finest, "I won't have to dumb it down for you." But I will go fast, so buckle in.
Only he was here.
Seems hard to believe, but we're already in the holiday time of the season. This page lists all the events in November and December. And out front on the front desk is a listing of all the events. Basically, if you're bored in Marietta this year, this season, it's your own fault. So get connected on social media and get out there. A super big thanks to the Marietta Rotary for another year of the Field of Honor. This partnership between the Rotary and the city and the school district is super strong and we are proud to see this event. This year, 2025 flags flew in Town Square. It's always a good time of year to remember those, especially in your families that gave, that sacrificed and served in the armed forces. Also last week, Marietta celebrated its 23rd Veterans Day Parade, the largest parade honoring veterans in Riverside County. As always, we appreciate all five of the city council members taking part in this parade, along with Supervisor Chuck Washington and State Senator Kelly Ciarto. On December 6, Donuts with Santa returns. Free donuts to the first 500 kids, because nothing says holiday spirit like sugar and a plump man in a Santa suit. And if that's not enough, Animal Friends of the Valley will be there for pet adoptions. So come for a donut, leave with a puppy. Parents, you are warned. Also on December 6, the Festival of Trees. Community groups will decorate trees, which are then gifted to local families. There will be live music, vendors, and dessert lane. My neighborhood always competes this year, so I encourage you to get your neighbors out there to compete. And trust me, we've spent more money on decorations than we have on our mortgages. If you open up your food pantry and realize you have enough canned goods to survive the apocalypse, let the city of Marietta help take those canned goods off your hands and throw, also throw in a new box style, so we can give those donations to our local food pantries and emergency shelters for distribution. Drop-off locations in December will include City Hall, Community Center, library, the police department, senior center, and the youth center. Or just wait until you hear Santa's cheerful caroling coming from a trolley, what we call a sleigh, and drop off your donations during Santa stops. And I think I skipped Santa stop here somewhere, but we'll get back to that one. And finally, get your Clark Griswold sweater on. Oop, one more. There you go. Get your Clark Griswold sweater on and decorate your house. The annual holiday home decorating contest gives out awards such as most festive, most creative, and best neighborhood. Just remember, if you hang lights across the street, the fire department's Grinch will show up, because we don't like our new shiny fire trucks wrapped up like Christmas presents. I am going to, can you go back to the Santa stops? I think I totally butchered that one and I apologize. Santa stops is starting on December 2nd for two weeks. This is where we go out in a trolley that we like to call a sleigh and meet in almost every single neighborhood in Marietta. The volunteers met last night and I'd say there was at least 75, maybe even 100 of them at the community center. While it seems like it's really coming fast and it seems really early, we are ready for the holiday season. So with that...
I attended the State of the College at Mount San Ycenno College at the University Center of Temecula. Very exciting. I put the service area, Mount San Ycenno, it's quite a very large service area that President Roger Schultz spoke about. He also spoke about higher education and the coalition that's moving things forward. And it was really exciting to hear the vision of that university center and actually to see four-year universities for us in that area. So, other things you can see will be listed on my announcements. I would just like to say if you need to reach out to me, my email is here, and also that is my cellphone. So, if you need to reach out, easiest way is shoot me a text and then I can call you back at my earliest convenience. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And there'll be more fun in Marietta, but gosh, with everything that we've had, the Veterans Day Parade and all that, oh my goodness, the Field of Honor, it's just getting better and better. So, thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sit on WR Cog, which is a regional commission, and they held a gratitude luncheon for the sponsors for their general assembly. It was really nice. I attended the Economic Outlook event from the Chamber. It's not so glim out there, so that's really, really good to hear. I also attended the Wellness Table Luncheon, which is one of my favorites where we talk about mental behavior, health, and homelessness. I attended a meeting with Supervisor Chuck Washington, and he brought together different departments with regards to adult protective services. I have one of the largest senior communities in my district, and I receive lots of phone calls with regards to seniors that are living alone, possibly onset dementia, and other issues that are concerning. And so, it was really nice to hear from all the departments what is happening. Little fact, by 2040, there'll be more seniors than there will be births in our nation. And we discussed, what does that look like with the state of California, with our aging population, and making sure that the state is prepared to have additional resources and services for our senior population. Supervisor Karen Spiegel had purchased a basket at the Milvet fundraiser that was at March Air Base, and she bid on my package, which included a lunch. So, I took her to lunch, and we talked about women's issues in Riverside County. I attended the Menefee State of the City, which was a beautiful evening. I attended the Rotary Field of Honor opening ceremony, which is always very touching. And you could see by the pictures that Brian Ambrose had shown that we're growing and growing every year. And some, I predict in the future, we're going to run out of space for all these flags. I attended the ABLE Future Kickoff. I also attended the Project Touch fundraiser. And again, something that I've been advocating for is to combat homelessness and mental behavior health. And that event was at Wilson Creek, and it was a beautiful event, and they raised a lot of money to help our homeless population in Marietta. Attended the Field of Honor Veterans Luncheon. Also attended the Veterans Parade. And in addition, the Marietta Town Hall meeting, where our mayor did a phenomenal job along with our city manager. Brian dealt with some homeless issues as well, and our police chief. I attended the Police Department's Citizens Academy graduation ceremony, and it was the largest to date. I think there were over 30 members, and the place was absolutely packed. So, that is growing, which I love hearing. In addition, I attended Senator Ciarto's Veterans Expo. It's one of my favorites. My youngest son is a veteran. He served in the nuclear power program for nine years. Sadly and unfortunately, his submarine, he experienced an explosion. Thank God it was docked. And to be able to have these resources for our veterans that are struggling with PTSD, mental behavior, health issues, even physical issues, I love the fact that he does this every single year. I attended the Wildomar State of the City, and Ashley De La Fipil did a phenomenal job. Their community, Little Wildomar, is really, really growing, and I love how they advocate for quality of life. I attended the Field of Honor candlelight ceremony, and I also attended the Milvet Package with the mayor. I would also like to announce the top three winners in Marietta. Hold on one second, sorry. That collected items was number one, Witch Witch Superior Sandwiches, Miss April's Dance, and the Gray Legal Group. And when Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Alexander had approached me about us competing with the city of Temecula, and of course, our mayor absolutely agreed that we wanted to participate. I'm very, I'm a very competitive person. I'm the one that put out there a challenge, and that was, whatever city were to lose, they would have to wear that T-shirt saying, "I love that city," and pick up trash in our respective cities. So, the city of Temecula lost, they have to wear a T-shirt that says, "I love Marietta," and all council has to pick up trash for two hours. And I attended the Youth in Government, and that concludes my report, Madam Mayor, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Lavell.
Thank you. As usual, evidence of me being anywhere is probably by way of Lori's phone having evidence of that. So, went to most of the events over the last couple of weeks with the city. This time of year is very busy, and it's a really spectacular time to be part of the city. One highlight is the Veterans Day Parade. You know, I was riding in the car with the gentleman driving my, down the old, into Old Town, and, you know, the scenes from like, the start of The Sandlot or Born on the Fourth of July really started to like, I mean, to have that parade with that many people, with the Field of Honor, with the things we do for Veterans Week, I don't know that there's another city in California that does that as well as this city does. So, thank you to everyone that's involved and puts that type of event, you know, week on for everyone, because we certainly are appreciative of all of our veterans to help keep this country what it is. And then to the announcement, I got to have lunch with the mayor yesterday. Yesterday?
It was yesterday.
Yeah, we went to Witch Witch, speaking of Witch Witch. Had a, you know, a very nice conversation with her, looking back at her year and everything, and it was just, it was nice to take a deep breath and enjoy just some good food and good conversations. So, thank you, Mayor, for that. And I think that's it. Looking forward to Santa stops. It's a very busy time, but if you haven't been, find a star, find a stop, or just show up, and you'll hear Santa coming down with a boombox. So, all right, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we did have a nice lunch yesterday. That was fun. I am not going to reiterate everything that we've all done, because we, everyone has been everywhere. I did attend the RCTC Commission Meeting on November 12th. I have a summary that will be filed, and it's part of this presentation. You can read it online. It tells you everything that was taken care of. I obviously was at the Town Hall Meeting, and I would like to say thank you to our community for coming out and for asking questions to help them understand what happened better. I want to thank Chief Henry, Captain Durant, Brian Ambrose, and our city manager for doing an outstanding job reassuring our community that they are safe and that this was an isolated incident, and that they will continue to be safe, because we have a department in the city who cares. So, I wanted to thank you very, very much for doing all of that. As far as the governing body announcements, the things that they did not list today is that I had the opportunity to go and thank the Navy Junior ROTC Unit at Marietta Mesa High School for being, presenting the colors at the State of the City. I got to meet all the candidates, all the kids, and talked to them for a little while and present them with the certificate for their unit. I did do that. There was a swearing-in for the Police Department and a promotion I also attended. I also did a service project filming for Vista Marietta High School, which was rather fun, and talked about, the main question was, what would you do if you knew somebody was homeless? How would you handle that? So, I gave them some steps about putting themselves in their shoes without literally being in their shoes, and some opportunities on how they can approach somebody and help them. So, that was, it was a really wonderful day to do that. I got to attend the S.R.C.A.R. President's Installation Luncheon, which was fabulous. Dr. Ho in Temecula, the Temecula Center for Cardiac Care, celebrated 10 years of saving lives in this community. That was really important and fun to go to. Opening ceremonies for the Field of Honor is a very touching part of my world, and that same day, a couple hours later, I was given a certificate in honor of my husband for his service in the Navy as a riverboat commander, and his name is on a very special flag for our local heroes. And that was just beyond proud moment for me. And then I ran over to the ABLE Future Kids Kickoff, couldn't find them, but I did get their certificate to the right person, I think, so I couldn't find them. But I was there also at Project Touch. Couldn't ask for a better organization to work with in serving our homeless and our unsheltered population. And the one other thing I wanted to really highlight, besides the parade, was absolutely wonderful, and the city of Wildomar did an outstanding job. I had an opportunity, as I think all of us have, to go through the Marietta Innovation Center to do a walkthrough. Wow, that is going to be amazing. So, when that, when we do our grand opening, hopefully the end of February, first of March is kind of what we're looking for, I want everybody to be there, because you are going to be wowed, without a doubt. And then to sum up, the Care Package Event doesn't get any better when you get a W behind your name. So, thank you to everybody. And the kids that came out yesterday were hysterical. And actually, I think there were four, four, four second grade classes here, and they were sitting in all the seats, and at one particular moment, they were dead silent. And I didn't think second graders could do that, but they did it when we took a selfie. So, that's when they all got quiet. So, we had a lot of fun. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for joining me on that. And that concludes my announcements and reports. We're going to now move on to public comments. Any person may address the governing body on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action will be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chelsea Ritchie.
Want to go to that microphone right there.
Hello, everyone. My name's Chelsea Ritchie. I work at Laurel Cemetery, and I was coming to offer you folks a formal invite, so I just have something, I don't know what's making--
No, you're okay.
I'm sorry. So, anyways, I'm just going to go ahead and read that. Maybe it's my watch?
I don't know.
There we go. Okay. So, Madam Mayor and honorable members of Marietta City Council, on behalf of Laurel Cemetery, it is our privilege to extend a formal invitation for you to join us at this year's Race Across America Ceremony taking place on Saturday, December 13th, at 9:00 at Laurel Cemetery. Each December, Race Across America remembers, reminds us of our shared mission to remember the fallen, honor those who served, and teach the next generation the value of freedom. Laurel Cemetery, home to more than 250 veterans spanning eras of service and sacrifice, carries a rich and meaningful history within our community. These hallowed grounds stand as a testament to courage, devotion, and the enduring spirit of those who served our nation. We, as a district, are deeply honored to recognize and remember our veterans not only during Race Across America, but every day for the ultimate sacrifice they made in the name of service and country. We respectfully invite the Marietta City Council, along with our community members and all who wish to participate, to join us in honoring those heroes as resurplaced upon their resting places. Your presence would be a meaningful tribute, symbolizing our city's gratitude and commitment to remembering those who safeguarded our freedoms. Thank you for your steadfast support of our veterans and community. We hope to share this special morning of remembrance with you. With respect and appreciation, Chelsea Ritchie from Laurel Cemetery.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Make sure I don't skip anything. At this time, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless the specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from the city council to pull any consent calendar item for discussion or recused from voting? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the consent, on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
May I please have a motion in a second? I have a motion by Councilmember De Force and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Lavell. Please vote. Are we waiting for something? We okay?
Waiting for you, Madam Mayor.
I thought I hit it once. There we go. Sorry.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you. We have two public hearings. We're going to start off with item number 13, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 625-25, adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Code. Are there any council members who would like to recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none. Staff, welcome. May we have your report?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers from the Department of Safe Fund.
Safe Fund.
So, before the Department of Fund can operate, somebody has to read through 800 pages of building codes, and that's us. So, you're welcome, Brian. Anyway, good evening. This is part two of the adoption of the city's building and fire codes. So, Mr. Crow, our building official, is going to specifically speak about our building code adoption progress. So, tonight is actually the public hearing. It's a little out of order from what you're used to, to doing. So, with state law, public hearings for the adoption of standard codes happen on the second reading and adoption. So, that's what's going on tonight. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand that over to Mr. Crow.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and the public. So, this is the second reading of the adoption ordinance, and I'm going to just recap of what the California Building Codes are. So, the proposed ordinance adds and amends portions of Title 15 of the Marietta Municipal Code. The ordinance to adopt the current California Building Standards Code became effective January, or will become effective January 1st, 2026. The current ordinance, Number 58322, was adopted on November 1st of 2022 and is updated every three years by state. State law allows local amendments to the California Building Standards Code, administrative and building code standards, and those amendments cannot be less restrictive than what the state law allows. The amendments are based on local, topographical, geological, climatic, and environmental conditions, and must be approved by the local decision-making authority, which would be you. Local jurisdictions are required to enforce the adopted California Building Standards Code. The California Building Standards Code applies statewide. Whether we adopt it in a local ordinance or not, come January 1st, we will be required to enforce on what the state adopts. If we want to make adjustments to it, that's what we're doing tonight. So, the summary of the adoption for the California Building Code is, we are reinstating the Board of Appeals, which consists of building industry members, construction industry professionals, and representatives. It's the same as what we've had from previous years. The only adjustment is the ICC chapter that used to serve this area has disbanded, and we're pulling from other ICC International Code Council chapters in the local areas. With that, our recommendation is to conduct, conduct a public hearing, accept the public testimony, conduct the second reading of the proposed ordinance, adding and amending portions of the Title 15 of the Marietta Municipal Code, adopting the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code, and adopt ordinance Number 625-25, entitled, An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, Adopting the 2025 California Building Standard Codes. And then if you have any questions, we're here to assist.
Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate that. I'm going to bring it back up to council. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimony?
Seeing none.
Thank you very much. Any council want to have any further deliberation or discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem John Lavell, and a second by Councilmember De Force. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you very much. We're going to go on to our next public hearing, item number 14. It is the second reading of the 2025 Fire Code and California Wildland Urban Interface Code. Are there any council members who would like to recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none. Hi, staff. Could you please give us your report?
Good evening, Mayor Warren and council. Thank you for hearing us for the second time this evening. My name's Bernie Malloy. I'm the Fire Chief for the City of Marietta, and with me tonight is our Fire Marshal Doug Strohsneider. And we also have our Fire Inspector Robert Steinbauer, who had to carry over all of the code books for us, because there are a lot. We're here this evening to present on agenda item 14, which is the second reading of the 2025 Fire Code and the new California Wildland Urban Interface Code. And at this point, I will be turning it over to Fire Marshal Strohsneider, who will take us through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The California Builder Standing Code, excuse me, Standards Code is published every three years and amends the California family of codes. These codes are commonly referred to as the Building, Residential, Fire, Plumbing, Mechanical, Electrical, Green, and Energy Codes. The 2025 edition of the California Fire Code automatically becomes effective statewide on January 1 of 2026. State law permits local jurisdictions to make modifications referred to as local amendments. That may be more, but in no event less restrictive than the requirements adopted by the state. To incorporate local amendments, jurisdictions must make findings that the local amendments are reasonably necessary due to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. One change in the process of the Fire Code action is this year, the California legislation following the Eaton and Palisades Fire enacted Assembly Bill 130. This puts in place a six-year moratorium on local amendments to the applicable, that's only applicable to residential units. This excludes changes or modifications that are subsequently equivalent to changes or modifications that were previously filed and effective prior to September 30th of 2025. Tonight, we are presenting the second reading of the 2025 Fire Code, which consists of the existing local amendments, previously approved and effective January 1 of 2023, which together with the new modifications pertaining to the following topics. We have amendments to clarify code language, section numbers, and verbiage to meet minimum code and standard requirements. Definitions. We're amending the standards for outdoor fireplaces and similar devices. We're amending the code regarding the fire department's migration to the enhanced radio communication system to align with PSEC requirements, and amending the fire flow requirements for projects located in a high or very high fire severity zone. Another change in this year's Fire Code is the addition of the newly established 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code, comprised of Chapter 49 of the 2022 California Fire Code and Chapter 7A of the 2022 California Building Code. This new code will designate fire safety regulations for properties located in the high and very high fire severity zones, as determined by the state of California. The severity zones are reflected in maps adopted by the council, which became effective on July 4th, 2025. So, with that, our recommendation is obviously conduct this public hearing, conduct the second reading, and approve Ordinance 626-25, entitled, An Ordnance of the City of Ca-- excuse me, An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, Adopting the California Fire Code, 2025 Edition, Based on the 2024 International Fire Code, Including Local Amendments and Additions, and Conduct the Second Reading and Approve Ordinance 627-25, Entitled, An Ordnance of the City Council, Adopting the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code, Based on the 2024 International Wildland Interface Code, Including Local Amendments and Additions. With that, available for any questions you might have?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to bring it back up for questions from council. Mayor Pro Tem Lavell.
Mr. Strohsneider, is this what we were speaking about earlier, about the gallons per minute for the residential areas in what would be considered a high fire, high fire zone?
Did you mean rural areas?
Rural, yes.
Yes, so, the previous discussion had to do with the increase in fire flow by additional 500 gallons per minute. There is a way that they can modify that by using the, a different standard to increase the safety for the community, but that only applies to large subdivisions. It wouldn't apply to someone on an individual lot, let's say on the west side of town. That wouldn't be applicable to that property.
So, nothing is owned for single-family use?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
You bet.
Thank you. Do we, no other questions? I do have a question. I have, somebody's question wanted to know the PSEC. Could you explain to why, what that is, so the, so the audience and our public knows?
Absolutely. About two years ago, Marietta Fire and Rescue switched on to the county's radio system, which is the advanced digital radio system that Marietta PD was one of the founding members of and has been on for quite some time. We were the first fire department to switch to this radio standard, and when we switched to that radio standard, we had to update our code to reflect the new radio standard. So, in large, large facilities where radio transmissions do not get through in the Fire Code, we are allowed to have them put in essentially a signal amplifier. And what that signal amplifier does is pass through the radio waves. When we switched standards to a different type of radio, it's completely different technology, our old Fire Code would not have addressed those standards. So, we had to modernize that and meet the new standards of the new radios that we are on.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
You're welcome.
And no further questions? Okay, at this time, I am going to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there, is there any public testimony?
Seeing none.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back for deliberation with our council members. Does anybody have any discussion items? At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Lavell, and a second by Councilmember De Force. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you very much, both of, all of you, for your reports tonight. We appreciate it. We're going to move on to notifications. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council shall be notified of review and approval of the final parcel, of the final map application for parcel map 38310, TPM 38310. An application was filed by Esther Gerson, a widow for tentative parcel map number 38310, to subdivide 20.63 gross acres into two numbered lots for condominium purposes for the development of 107 detached condominium units and 78 attached junior accessory dwelling units. Engineering staff have completed a review of the final parcel map, PM 38310, which conforms to the conditions of approval and the tentative parcel map.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, are there any reconsiderations?
A council member who voted on the prevailing side of the original motion may move a reconsideration to consider new information or correct inadvertent errors on a non-public hearing item at the same or the next meeting. At this time, are there any requests from any city council members? Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, are there any council members with requests to add or withdraw items to the future agendas?
Now is the time for council members' requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the requests. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Council members, are there any requests?
Any? Good.
Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. As you all know, we had a very unfortunate situation in our city a couple of weeks ago. And in light of that, I would like to close this night evening with a moment of silence for Mr. Bob Brinks, who passed away due to that tragic incident. And then I would also like to offer our deepest condolences to his wife Cynthia, and may she recover and move forward with her life as, as quickly as possible, and, and with the support of her community. So, if we could have just a moment of silence, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. With no further business, we are now adjourned.